And we are ready when you are.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Today is Tuesday, February 23rd. For our regular scheduled board meeting for the Adelanto Elementary School District. Time is 5:31 PM. Can we get roll call?
Trustee Benz?
I'm present.
Trustee Akas?
Present.
Trustee Hines?
Present.
Trustee La French?
La French, present.
Kristi Turner?
Trustee Turner, present. We have a call 5-0. Moving on to 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please stand? And put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. Where we stand, one nation, under God. In the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 2, Adoption of the Agenda. 2.01, Proposed additions, deletions, adjustments, and order of business. Mrs. Leve.
Madam President, we do. The first one, we have an addition. We would be adding the following item 3.08, Public Testimony. And then also, there's a correction in item 7.03. The resolution had the wrong date. It should say February 9th, not January 19th. And it is for the month of February, not the month of January.
Okay, is that it? Are there any others?
Yes, that is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion?
With those corrections.
I motion.
I have a motion by trustee Akas. Is there a second?
I second. Trustee Hines.
Okay, I have a second by trustee Hines. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hines?
Hines, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass 5-0. Moving on to Section 3. Public testimony. A public comment period for items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board. Okay. The public comment period for items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board. Public comment period is administered by state law. And is appointed in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting law do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well-being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and employees is a top priority of the Adelanto Elementary School District. Consent with the shelter-in-place orders from the governor and San Bernardino County, where members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. This meeting is in compliance with the governor's executive order N-29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconferencing rules required by the Brown Act. Likewise, in-person attendance at board meetings will not be permitted. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on open session, agenda, and non-agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each open session item. The board limit the total time for public comment on each items to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Okay. Are there any golden rods from audience members?
Yes, Madam President, we do have Mrs. Carla Hamilton Yates wanting to speak on open session. Ms. Yates, please unmute yourself and welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, President Turner, Dr. Mitchell, AESD Board members and cabinet. On behalf of Victorville NAACP, I would like to present an excerpt from Still I Rise in honor of African-American History Month. Still I Rise. You may write me down in history with your bitter, twisted lies. You may trod me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I rise. Does my sassiness upset you? Why are you beset in gloom? Because I walk like I got oil wells pumping in my living room. Just like moons and like suns with a certainty of tides, just like hopes springing high. Still, I rise. Did you want to see me broken, bowed head and lowered eyes? Shoulders falling down like teardrops weakened by my soulful cries. You may shoot me with your words. You may cut me with your lies. You may kill me with your hatefulness. But still, like air, I rise. Out of the huts of history's shame, I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I'm a black ocean leaping and wide, welling and swelling. I bear in the tide. Leaving behind the nights of terror and fear. I rise. Into a daybreak that's wondrously clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise. I rise. I rise. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that. I love that point. I've always loved that point. Thank you, Ms. Yates. Are there any others? Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, Madam President, we do. I'd like to welcome to the board Ms. Nanette Cadilly, President ADTA. Ms. Yates, thank you.
Good evening, trustees, cabinet, Dr. Mitchell, and President Turner. I hope everyone is healthy and well. I know I've said this at our ADTA at our ADTA's general membership meeting, but I don't think that our members hear it enough. Thank you for hanging in there and doing such an awesome job, loving, caring, being there for our students, teaching them, and of course, learning new ways of teaching and putting up with the day-to-day struggle with technology issues. Thank you, thank you, thank you, ADTA. To the cabinet and trustees, thank you for listening to all of the complaints and suggestions over the years from parents and from teachers and staff members, and finally, changing these board meetings so that the closed session is last. This will now make it possible to not have to be online for so long, and maybe this will be the push to get more people to attend these meetings. I would like to also show my appreciation to the cabinet for taking more of a collaborative approach, working with both of our unions for a safe return in the reopening of our schools in the summer and fall. It has also been a very positive and enjoyable partnership working with Michael Kraus and Stephen Quintero. They went out of their way after hours to update our membership on very important issues about insurance and COVID vaccine situations and statistics on COVID in our area. This collaboration, I think, is one of the most important because our members really want to know what's going on and want to be updated consistently. And this is happening with the help of Michael and Stephen, so thank you. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Cadill on her retirement. I have learned a lot working with you, and you have definitely kept me on my toes. I know you will enjoy this next phase of your life with your adorable grandbabies and having time to relax and focus on yourself finally. Although I don't like ending on a negative note, I do have one complaint that is in the forefront of my mind right now, which is that our members, specifically the teachers, are having a very hard time getting the materials that they need from their school sites because of our campuses being closed. And some of the admin are not being very accommodating. I'm hoping that the situation gets rectified soon, seeing that we're going to remain off-campus for a little while longer. One last thing before I leave, I would like to invite the board, the trustees, to our annual CTA luncheon, March 6th at 12:00 PM. It will be on Zoom, of course. I'll send that invite out to Xenia and see if she could get that out to you. Again, it's March 6th at 12:00 PM, so I'm hoping to see you on that Zoom. And thank you for this time that you've given me to speak. It's always appreciated.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Are there any others, Dr. Mitchell? Is there members from? Okay, that's it. Are there members from CSA who would like to address the board at this time? Okay, hearing none, let's move on.
I do see Ms. Lynn raising her hand.
Oh, okay, okay.
Diane, please unmute yourself and go ahead and speak. Thank you. You're still muted, Diane.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I want to well, good afternoon, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, cabinet, certificated staff, and also classified staff. I want to thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for meeting with our classified staff and allowing the cabinet to inform us of the district events. Our classified staff truly do appreciate it. Also, I would like to say I agree with everything that Ms. Cadill had just said, so thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Okay, are there any others? Okay, let's move on to adoption of the agenda, Section 3. May I have a motion?
I'm a mo- motion.
A motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
I second.
A second by trustee Akas. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hines?
Hines, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass 5-0. Moving on to Xenia, could you move it down a little bit to Section 3? We're still on Section 3. Okay. Adoption of the minutes. Board minutes approved as written by order for the regular board meeting on February 9th, 2021. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes?
Madam President, I do have a first by Christina Benz and a second by trustee Holly Akas.
Okay.
So we're on 4.0 consent agenda items.
Okay, okay, 4.1. Waive the reading of all resolutions being considered by public agenda as having been read. Okay, we will be taking items 4.02 through 4.18 for closed session, I mean for consent. Would anyone like to pull any agenda items?
I would like to pull 4.13.
That's what I mean, paper here, okay. Are there any others? Trustee La French?
No, I have none.
Okay, trustee Akas?
No.
Trustee Hines?
None.
Okay, I have none. So we will be pulling 1403.
No, 13.
13. Is there a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda?
I motion. I second.
I have a motion by, who was that? Trustee?
Hines.
Hines. And a second by trustee Akas.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hines?
Hines, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass 5-0. Okay. Moving on to Section 5, Items Pull from the Consent Agenda. We have one. 14.4.4.13. Why can't I get that right? Trustee Benz, Certified Personnel, Certified Resignation for Purpose of Retirement. Okay, trustee Benz?
Was, this one was the one for, yeah, Sandra. Good, I was afraid. I just wanted to take this time because I really don't get, get, get to talk to Ms. Cadill, you know, except when we, we meet, and I did want to wish her all the best. I am sad to see her go, you know. I liked her being here. I always felt she did what was best for the district. But I personally, I'm sorry, I wanted to take this time to wish you the best and saying thank you for what you've done for our district. I am sorry to see you go, but I wish you happiness in your future. I true, truly do, and I will miss you.
Thank you, trustee Benz. I appreciate that.
I did those remarks. I wanted to pull it and say something, but I knew I was going to cry, so I didn't. But I'm gonna I'm like trying, trying here. I kept, kept, kept short, because, yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any other comments, trustee La French?
Yes, of course, I have lots of comments. Ms. Andrea, from the time that I stepped, you know, in as a new trustee, I have always, you know, admired, you know, your spunkingness, your ability to articulate, your teachable moments, you know, with me, watching you, your style, your grace, your supportiveness for our district from the grandkids, talking about our grandkids, and just, you know, it was so hurtful to know that you were leaving. However, I know that you will have a wonderful time, wonderful time. You will, and you will enjoy, and you deserve every single moment of your retirement. You have been fabulous for our district. You know, you know. You inspire me, you know, you are, you have everything that, you know, someone, I don't know how you're going to be irreplaceable. Someone that, you know, of your caliber, what you do, how you fight for our district, how you explain everything, and you articulated. It was so appreciative, you know, just for me to be able to, you know, be with you and to listen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Enjoy.
I plan to.
Trustee Hines?
Yes. I totally concur with everything that's been spoken so far, and you know, I felt a little shocked when I heard, when I got the message. And then I just, it was bittersweet because, again, we've just been through some amazing times, even as we walk through, you know, the challenges that we've had in this season. But you have just taken our district to another level. I, of course, was worried about who would be able to wear your crown and keep it going. But I'm also excited for you to be able to spend time with your G-babies and just really, really enjoy that, and, and with your family. You know, family is so precious. This, this time just makes us even cherish it more, so I'm happy that you're going to be able to do that, and I will definitely miss you, but I'll stay in touch.
All right, thank you. That's a deal. All right.
Okay.
Okay, and Ms. Andrea, you know, you and I have go way, way back. When I started. When I got the news, and you've said it, you know, over the years, I will be retiring, but you know, people say that, and they stick around for years and years, and when I got this message, I'm like, oh, no. And, you know, I called you up on the phone and said, I knew you were retiring, but I didn't think it was this soon.
Yeah, and I was with my grandbabies, right?
I know, and so I just want to say that your service to this district is unprecedented. You have really done over the beyond the call of duty, and you have always been here. Never really see you take a vacation. You're always here. Over the years, I left for two years, and, you know, you haven't skipped a beat, and I just want to say I appreciate everything that you've done for our staff, you know, our students, and I just want to say, you know, you're retiring young. She's really older than what she looks, but
Yes, I am. I am.
And I wish you all the success.
Thank you so much.
You know, I want you to enjoy your time off. I want you to enjoy your grandbabies and your mother and your children, and just enjoy life, and we will miss you. You will always have a place in our hearts, and, you know, don't hesitate to pick up the phone and give us a call and let us know how you're doing. I will be calling you.
Okay, that's a deal.
Enjoy your vacation, okay, and with that, hope to see you before, well, you'll be here until well, you technically won't retire until June 30th, but I know you have a lot of lead to take, so we'll be seeing you.
All right, thank you so much, everybody.
Enjoy.
Okay.
You know, there was one item that I meant to pull, but I didn't pull it. So, Dr. Mitchell, I want you to talk about item 4.03 in your superintendent's comments. That was the tutoring, FEB tutoring. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, I was talking about that during my superintendent's comments, but I can talk now about it if you'd like.
Okay, can you?
Okay, great. So, so board, president asked me to speak a little bit more about FEB tutoring. It's something that we're piloting through the spring. They're a company that provides one-on-one tutoring after school hours and on the weekends. Students can call, can get online with this company and get homework help. You can also get tutoring in subject areas. They're working, they'll work after hours in school and are available to kids throughout the evening and into the weekend as well. Our plan here is to divide these 2,000 hours across all of our schools in an effort to get kids some more support and assistance after hours. We will be closely monitoring the success of this program and looking at expanding it for next year, but for now, we'll try it out for 2,000 hours. We did have three schools contract with them in an earlier board meeting. Tonight, tonight's agenda item was to approve hours for the rest of the district, and so we'll be getting survey information from our students who participate in this program, and we'll be looking for some good reports. I'm hearing from my peers across the High Desert. There being, this company is being used across many of the districts in the High Desert. And so we're looking to see if we can, as just another support for our students in this time where online learning can only go so far. We know that our kids have some needs that we may not be able to meet during the regular school day, and we're hoping to get some help with this, with helping our kids. So we'll see how this goes, goes, board, and we'll be reporting back to you on a regular basis to see how parents and students, as well as our school leaders and teachers feel about this program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee, do you have any questions on that agenda item? No? Okay. Well, I, you know, I asked Dr. Mitchell to, I was going to pull this, and I wanted Dr. Mitchell to talk about it because, you know, with some of our, a lot of our students struggling, we feel that the tutoring is really good, and to have it 24/7, to have it 24 hours a day, and then at the end of each section that the student can rank whether or not it was helpful for them was really important. So I really would like to get the feedback on that because, as you know, a lot of students, some students are doing really, really well with distant learning, and there's other students that are struggling really bad. So with this tutoring, it's very essential for them, and I think that it will improve, you know, their academic success. So thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for explaining that program. Okay, so we'll move on to Section 6. Staff
And then President?
We need a motion to approve 4.13. Is there a motion to approve this?
I was hoping you were going to skip that one.
I know. Is there a motion to approve 4.13?
I, I, I motion to approve 4.13.
Okay, so the motion is by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
Can I vote no? She can't leave if we vote no. A second?
A second by trustee La French. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Sad, sadly, I.
Trustee Akas?
I don't want to vote, but okay, I.
Trustee Hines?
Hines, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass sadly, 5-0. You can retire now, Ms. Cadill. Okay, moving on to Section 6, Staff Reports and Presentations, Professional Learning and Collaboration Plans. Presentation from Columbia Middle School, El Mirage, and George Magnet. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam President and Board, and so tonight, again, as committed to, we have another three of our schools that will be presenting their professional learning and collaboration plans. Schools have collaboratively worked to develop these plans to prioritize the learning that teachers identified as important for their growth to accelerate student outcomes and performance. So we're seeing some really great progress from our schools. Really, really, we're after more of an experiential goal than a tactical goal. The experiential goal is that we're hoping to, that this plan fosters increased engagement and collaboration amongst administrators and teachers. We want to de-privatize classroom practice. We want to have teachers working together and determining learning goals for their own professional learning. We want teachers reflecting, the principals reflecting with them on how we can get better in our respective roles, and so so pleased to have Mr. Upshaw and his team tonight from Columbia, so Mr. Upshaw and team?
Okay, thank you, board. Thank you, and good evening, Dr. Mitchell and cabinet. President Turner, Adelanto Elementary School District Board Trustees. Thank you for this time to present to you what's been going on at Columbia Middle School, what we have planned for Columbia Middle School, and to share with you our professional learning and collaboration plan. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce both my assistant administrators, Assistant Principal Kristi Phillips and Assistant Administrator Garland Hamilton Yates. We also have several staff members here, and I thank you for your support, and we couldn't have done this without you as well. As you have heard from previous professional learning and collaboration plan presentations that you've heard this year, we were challenged, challenged by Dr. Mitchell to truly collaborate with our staff to formulate a professional learning and collaboration plan to identify areas where we as a staff could agree that this is what we want as a staff to see school-wide in each and every classroom. We want to take the best that is happening in our classroom and share that. We want to make sure everything that the best can happen is happening. We've had discussions. We've given presentations to the staff what a professional learning and collaboration plan is. We surveyed our staff, giving them options of FOKI. We reviewed the staff surveys. We analyzed current and trailing data in the area of CAS data, STAR reading, STAR math results, interim comprehensive assessment data. The process Dr. Mitchell brought to us encouraged us and held us accountable. He held us accountable in the planning of the professional learning and collaboration plan to ensure that all staff members were heard. This process allowed us to identify our areas of improvement and identify the steps that we are going to take to ensure our students gain achievement and guide our students to increase our scores in language arts and math and all of our core classroom. And to continue to transform the climate at Columbia Middle School to a community where everyone feels safe and welcome. I truly believe that before you can make positive change, you must have data indicating what you are doing well and what you need to approve on. As Dr. Mitchell has made clear to us that CAS scores are measures of trailing data, meaning that this data is from students from less than over a year old, and that's why we must consider our interim comprehensive assessments, our quarterly STAR math and reading tests, so that teachers can see in real time what our students are able to do to drive their lessons and their lesson plans, to witness what's going on in good quality classrooms. Here are what our teachers and staff focused on. Our first professional FOKI is critical reading strategies. And our second professional FOKI will be philosophy of motivation with Kagan engagement strategies. I would now like to introduce my Assistant Principal, Ms. Kristi Phillips. Well, it looks like Christie's not going to be able to be with us, so we'll go ahead and move on. We talked about critical reading strategies, how to refocus the professional development based on what, let's go back to one slide. There we go. Thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties. It is a distance learning process, so we apologize.
Mr. Upshaw, did you want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
My apologies, I must have been on mute. Thank you to Xenia for asking me to unmute myself. I appreciate that. What I was saying was, good evening, President Turner and Board members, Dr. Mitchell and the rest of our Cabinet. Here you see some of the things that the teachers decided we should be looking for during our instructional rounds. On the left, you see some of the critical reading strategies that were identified. And on the right, you see how these things might be taught in the classroom. The goal is to establish those things we are doing well, so we can focus on, as Dr. Mitchell might say, getting better in these areas that maybe we have, we are weaker in. As a team, we have already agreed upon using avid strategies as we are and have been an avid school for many years. That being said, we have already had avid training specifically in the area of critical reading strategies. Several of our teachers are already avid certified and several newer teachers are becoming certified as we speak. Besides avid, we also are using ACE, which stands for answer, cite and explain your answers strategies and also the DBQ project. The DBQ project provides teachers with both the content and strategies for increasing literacy among students. These are all excellent ways to incorporate critical reading strategies into our classroom design. During one of our staff meetings, we broke our teachers into department groups and they determined what critical reading strategies might look like in the classroom, what teachers might be doing. They came up with, teachers would show their students how to annotate word problems through modeling. They would also model to students how to cite evidence and evaluate sources. They would model how to interpret nonfiction text and other secondary sources. They would teach students to annotate these texts and provide them with opportunities to practice. They would also provide students with pre-reading strategies and lessons. For example, things like making predictions, teaching vocabulary in text, teaching background information, just as some examples. They would also model shared text in terms of syntax and annotation and extracting meaning. Teachers also would provide multiple exposures to context, content-specific vocabulary using keywords, root words and affect definitions. At the next meeting that we met, they did the same thing, but instead of for teachers, they were focusing on students. The same department chair groups came up with what this would look like. Again, using ACE strategies, DBQ and critical reading strategies. According to the teachers, the students should be able to comprehend text and make meaning out of word problems, identifying necessary information to solve the problem, both individually and collaboratively or as a group. They also said that students should be able to present and justify their results regardless of the accuracy. They would also, students would also be able to do A sentence frames and students would be allowed to determine central ideas, cite evidence and seek clarification about textual content when necessary. And all of this would be encouraged by encouraging them to identify the meaning of unknown words and phrases at the same time. Students also should be able to annotate and develop an inner voice to garner meaning from their text. And then, last but not least, we also would want them to acquire content-specific vocabulary and vocabulary tools that could be used both in reading and writing. And now back to Mr. Upshaw.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Assistant Administrator in charge of academic coaching, Mrs. Carla Hamilton Yates.
Good evening, President Turner, AESD Board members, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet. Columbia Middle School teachers chose to implement growth mindset for our school with the use of Kagan strategies. According to Susanna Claro in her study on mindset, growth mindset is a powerful predictor of academic achievement across socioeconomic levels. The definition of growth mindset is the belief that intelligence is not fixed, but can be developed. She finds that students from low-income families are less likely to have a growth mindset because of limited opportunities, resources and healthcare. But the students with growth mindset outperform their peers across economic levels. Next slide, please. So, at Columbia Middle School, growth mindset is seen throughout the classroom and practice because teachers give students the choice of different options for activities. They create goals and expectations for students based on their ability. Teachers allow students a chance to collaborate with their peers on a regular basis and they offer students multiple opportunities to complete challenging assignments. They also teach students how to evaluate, to review their personal progress and growth to develop a growth mindset. Next. And the students, they display and learn how to increase their growth mindset because they are able to choose their activities and in, and enjoyment, they are allowing, through this enjoyment, they are greatly motivated. They're able to assess their own goals and accomplish them through the guidance of their teachers. They have a chance to discuss and collaborate with ideas and agree upon solutions. They learn to assess, analyze and learn from mistakes and improve their performance. And again, they evaluate their work over time to compare how they have grown and progressed.
Thank you, Ms. Yates, and these are the things we have planned that we're currently doing. We as a chef, we as a staff have chose as a collaborative book study leader and me by Stephen Covey. We had a presenter from the Stephen Covey Professional Development Organization present to our staff during one of our staff meetings. We've had professional strategies from the RIVS Avid Program, which stands for advancement via individual determination organization. The trainers from Avid led the complete staff through training on critical reading strategies, which include WICER. WICER stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization and Reading. We have monthly Avid trainings with trainers and are offering summer institute training to all of our teachers. We've had monthly training on ACE writing strategies, which is answer, cite and use evidence in the writing process. Avid critical reading strategies, training and the school-wide use of graphic organizers. Next slide, please. Our key performance indicators. Our goal is to see student achievement will increase in English Language Arts, Math, Science and Social Studies. Student achievement will increase 5% in these core areas and they're going to be measured by CAS data, STAR testing and Common Assessment Data. Two, and our engagement, we want to increase the student engagement by providing a safe school environment and focus on improving the school climate for all students. We will try and we will, we will reduce suspensions by 5% and we will increase our attendance. We have to have the kids present for them to learn. We will increase attendance by 5% using school-wide positive behavior supports. The plan in action, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Yates and she's going to talk about the plan of action.
Thank you again. Well, our plan is in action and you can see it through the collaboration and leadership through our hiring of department chairs. And with the hiring of department chairs, our teachers visit classrooms, meet by, visit each other's classrooms and they also meet as departments so that they learn the best practices of their colleagues as well as set short-term goals. Our ACE training, it was conducted in staff meetings and so we follow up and monitor that it is implemented. And when we see that there needs growth, we supply extra trainings within our staff meetings. Our Kagan training, we went to Kagan training, two-day Kagan training and we're also bringing Kagan again so that we will continue to grow in our Kagan strategies of mindset. We also learned virtual engagement and strategies. Our students recently went to the Black College Expo so that they can see and increase their mindset by seeing productive people who are doing great things that look like them, as well as our Avid certification, which is in progress and will be completed in the next two months. In the Avid certification trainings, they learn detailed strategies and they practice them in every session. And thanks to Dr. Mitchell, we learned how to conduct see, hear, feel surveys as well as plus, delta, missing so that we will continuously improve. And again, it takes a village. So we pull from every resource we have and the systematic operation procedures in every department is involved and it helps our students know that there is help everywhere within our school. The counselors are involved with their virtual support in real time. For instance, when teachers see that there is a need or a student needs extra encouragement to follow our expectations, counselors and admin are notified immediately and they call the home to ensure that the parents are aware of the challenges and then they respond quickly. Thank you.
So to wrap it up, on behalf of the Columbia Middle School, staff, teachers and classified administration, I would like to thank President Turner and her fellow Adelanto Elementary School Board Trustees, Dr. Mitchell and the Cabinet for this opportunity to present Columbia Middle School's professional learning and collaboration plan tonight. Thank you, and we are open for any questions.
Trustees, do we have any questions? I'll start with you, trustee Akis.
Yes, I'm curious to know, how is your attendance going with the junior high kids? Are they attending? Are you getting kids checking in late, not at all, going on vacation? What's going on?
I think Dr. Mitchell shared with us, we've got like over, I think, 90 or 80 kids in the whole district attending Zoom classes from Mexico. So we've got kids attending classes from their cars, from their homes, from their bedrooms. We would like to see more, obviously, but we have kids attending from all areas and all locations, which is great.
Do you know what the percentage is of kids that are just not showing up at all?
I would hate to give you a wrong number, but it's a high percentage and we've got a program with CWA where we're reaching out to those kids who aren't showing up. You guys authorized a great phone system and so, well, great for us. I don't know about the parents because we get calls and they get calls every period. So if their students is not showing their face on the screen and they're not doing what they need to do to be present in the class, they're getting marked absent and the T and the parents are getting called. So we have a good system in place to follow up on all those kids that aren't showing up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to President Turner and Board Member Akis on your victory in November.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, trustee Benz?
I actually have no questions at this time. I, I look forward to seeing the improved improvement in the collab, collaboration with your teachers. I know it's important because, you know, it, I like to pick brains. You never know, somebody may have a better idea and I do get excited when I hear that your staff is working as a team for, for these students and, and I want to thank, thank them for that.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Thank you so much.
Trustee Hines?
Just a curious question. You know, everything I heard was, you know, just showing. It was amazing to me considering, you know, how we had to transition our students this year. So I just continue to just commend all the teachers, administrators and staff on just to, you know, the ability to keep this moving forward for our kids. The attendance of the Black College Expo, was that a virtual experience or was it? How did they, how did they bring that about right now in this season?
I was curious. Ms. Yates talked about it because she brought it to us. We presented it to the board and then we had a couple of other schools in our district jump on with us. So Ms. Carla, Ms. Yates, I'm sorry.
Normally it is an in-person event at the Staples Center, but it was virtual this year and it was very well-attended. We had recruiters from Disney, Nickelodeon, we had financial aid. All the colleges, black colleges were represented as well as the UC system and other colleges that wanted to be there. All were there to explain to students what is expected of them now because they cannot prepare at the last minute. So what we want to do is expose our children so that they know what they need to start preparing for so that they are ready when they are in 11th grade and they will come back to our community and serve it and bring back their education. So, so we were very happy about it. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hines.
Trustee LaFrenche?
I just have one question. I enjoyed the presentation. Mr. Upshaw, how are, what activities are, can you give me some examples or what your school is doing for motivating the children during this time?
Yeah, so luckily, and this goes to what we've been talking about, trustee Hines brought up, is the amazing teachers we have. Our teachers have volunteered, have re-engaged in everything at our school and training and learning. They have volunteered to do after-school tutoring. We have clubs after school every day. So it's amazing. We have coding, we have gaming, we have chess, we have Christian club. We have all these clubs for the kids after instructions and we are having people every day in our after-school clubs for the social motion and learning aspect. And again, you know, to, our virtual office is manned eight to two every day. So we have an avenue for anyone, parents and kids who feel like they need to talk to somebody. And so we're, we're doing our best and we're always open to other ideas as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have one thing. Mr. Upshaw, just remember that we're also doing virtual awards.
Oh, yeah. We've been doing virtual awards at the quarter and the semester and we've shared those with Cabinet and it's on our website if you'd like to see it. If you go to our website, you can see our academic, first semester academic awards.
Thank you.
I have another question. Is it possible, Mr. Upshaw, in the future to have any type of life classes where children that age can learn how to sew, cook, balance a checkbook, change a tire? I know they do that sometimes in high school and in private school. I know I did. How about our junior high kids? Can we do something like that in the future when we go back to school?
Yeah, well, we've got, you guys have authorized great things already. Last year, you brought the career technical education classes to our campuses and those are kind of dealing with 21st century kind of avenues, but you know, I took those same classes you're talking about and we all know that and it's been emphasized to us in our, in our staff principal meetings that not everyone's going to go to college, right? And we need some good hard trade works and, you know, good quality jobs and skills. So we're open to having electives in that kind of vein, but right now, we're So we're open to having electives in that kind of vein, but right now we're kind of restricted by the California State Department of Ed Career Technical Education Guidelines.
Maybe if it was an after-school program?
Good idea.
Yeah.
Know anyone who's got expertise in that? We'll get embedded through HR and we'll look for some people on our campus. I'm sure we have some outstanding tradesmen on our campus as well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, not only trades, but you know, at that age, I hate to say it, but you know, children, some parents die young and a lot of children are on their own at a young age. I know I was. And so to have like a sewing class, a cooking class, just basic life skills at a young age, I, I just don't see anything wrong with that. I, I think it's great. I think every child can benefit from that. So if it has to be an after-school program, I'm sure we can find people in, in the community that know how to sew, are good at cooking, anything to, you know, help these kids. And I think we might have a good turnout of people who might want to do that for our kids. So maybe we could just kind of keep that on the back burner when we open up. Like I said, maybe an after-school program, if we can put it into the curriculum, I think that would be great and very beneficial too.
Yeah, it's one of the strengths we have is we work very well with our after-school program. They come into our classrooms and they're always open for good ideas like that. So I will bring that up to them and we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think that's a conversation that we should talk about through the entire district. So maybe we could talk about it during, you know, one of our workshops, what we would like to see, you know, and take it to Dr. Mitchell and, you know, carry it further. Okay, my question, Mr. Upshaw, is, well, thank you for your presentation. You know, I'm hearing some great things. And what I would like to say is, you know, you hear about essential workers, you know, you hear about healthcare workers, which they are essential, but you know, our teachers are, are central workers too. Our staff are essential workers, our cafeteria staff, our bus drivers, we're all, they all, you all are essential workers and you should be acknowledged as such. You know, I hear the state is opening, trying to open up schools without giving the teachers the benefit of getting vaccine first. You know, that can't happen until, you know, we treat our teachers as essential workers and protect them and, and provide safety for them. So with that being said, I'll get off that box. Mr. Upshaw, what I would like to ask you, I know distant learning was thrown at us without any manuals, without any training, without any, anything. And it's in, our teachers have risen to that level and providing, you know, instruction. I did virtual walkthroughs and I'll talk about that later, but what I saw, I was really impressed with what I saw. And what would you take from distant learning and bring back to in-person instruction? What, what, if any, in, with all that you showed us today, what will you bring back? And on, on personal, when you return?
I think it's more of a concept for me. I think Dr. Mitchell put it very well last time we met, when he said, there was a, it's a transformational change in education that's been forced upon us. I mean, you think about the changes in education, just in my twenty years, are slow, methodical. What our teachers and teachers across the nation have been able to do in such a short time, it's really amazing. So to answer your question, I would try and capture whatever it is that intrinsically made them be able to do it and bring that back to in-person learning. And, you know, I, I'm not the first to say it, I know we've got some other principals and I'm sure they'd say the same thing is, you know, I'm, I'm glad I was an administrator at this time rather than a teacher. Just, just, I mean, it's amazing how they've conquered, you know, the distance learning platform, the breakout rooms, the side chats, the, and it's just amazing. So if I could capture anything about, you know, and you're right, your first comments were right on, we've suffered enormous tragedy, just our school and district-wide and, you know, this whole world has been just devastated by this. But our, our teachers and our staff have, have just, you know, amazed me personally. And if I could capture any of the, how they approached this and approach it to our in-person learning, I think it would be just great for our community, great for our kids and great for our district.
Okay, well, that's all I had. I just got a message saying that we need to move on.
Thank you, President Turner.
Upshaw for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, thank you, Rich and team. Enjoyed your presentation, looking forward to the work that comes out of it. Thanks so much. Next, we have our principal from El Mirage, Mr. Brian Markort. Brian, please unmute yourself and get started. Thank you.
On the way, thank you. So just checking, can you all see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sure, yeah.
There we are. Okay. Good evening, Board President Turner, trustees and cabinet members. Good evening, members of the audience. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you the professional learning and collaboration plan for El Mirage School. Thank you, staff members from El Mirage for your support and contributions to this plan. Um, what, here in front of you is the continuous learning plan that we are using to improve the teaching and learning process at El Mirage. First, we learn and then we provide professional development. During that time, we focus on skills that are led by experts, administrators and staff. Then we have planning time with specific time provided for the planning, implementation and utilization of strategies. We practice following the appreciative inquiry process through our classroom visits, identifying what's going right in our classrooms. We refine and with specific time provided to share ideas, collaborate and refine the process developed. The folk guide that we chose at El Mirage School are teacher clarity. And it's part of teacher clarity is providing think time for students and success criteria so that students can evaluate their learning. Students will understand what they're learning, why they're learning it, and how they will know when they have learned it. We will also focus on literacy and English language development. The goal here will be to improve reading ability schoolwide. We chose the folk guide based on a few facts. First, we have a high percentage of English language learners at El Mirage. Surveys of both teachers and parents indicated their agreement with chosen folk guide. We realized that the data from both the STAR and the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress indicate that we have many students that are struggling. This survey that you're looking at was disseminated by the district to teachers. And the key areas of improvement identified here are English language development, literacy and explicit direct instruction. Of the one hundred and forty students at El Mirage School, eighty-four English language learners were reclassified as English language proficient. We have fifty-eight students classified as English learners. We conducted our needs assessment as a site and this survey was based on ideas from the book Visible Learning for Literacy by John Hattie. As a staff, we got together and read the first chapter of the book together and then conducted the survey based on high-leverage instructional practices. Among staff, the emergent themes were teacher clarity, teacher credibility, English language development, instruction and literacy. As a site, we also recognize that we have students that are well below grade level according to the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress and the Renaissance STAR exams based on where they should be. Explicit direct instruction ultimately means that teachers provide best instruction first. They have clear learning intentions and clear success criteria. Explicit direct instruction is teacher clarity. The system set in place to support our folk guide, we include three different six-week interventions that will have teachers from primary grades teaching upper grades students that have reading comprehension skills that need to improve. At this point, we have students that are three or more years behind their grade level according to the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. The plan is to have the students attend the classes before school from eight o'clock to eight forty-five twice weekly for six weeks. At the end of the six-week blocks, we will reassess to evaluate progress and reorganize the groups based on their performance and needs. Our professional learning community meetings are led by teachers themselves as well as other professionals. We have monthly site-based English language development, professional development led by our English language development coordinator. And we also have time in those meetings for teachers to implement what they've learned from those meetings into their lesson plans for the next day. During these meetings, staff learn about the best practices and have planning time to implement them. We also have our literacy coach train the teachers in the best practices for developing our students' reading ability. This is what, what teacher clarity looks like from the teacher perspective. And it includes them writing their lesson plans, thinking about the questions, what am I teaching, why am I teaching it, and how will I know when students learn it? And what will I do when students already know it? And then providing success criteria to all students. A key component of this from the teacher's perspective is that they're providing think time in order to allow all students to engage in the curriculum. From the student perspective, the students will have the ability to answer those same questions. What am I learning? Why am I learning it? And how I know that I learned it? Students will also evaluate their skills against the success criteria. All right, at El Mirage, we have a culture of collaborative learning. We have teachers that are willing to teach each other and learn from each other. In our professional development meetings, they practice, they share, share best practices and we are currently in the study of the Teacher Clarity Playbook. Our instructional feedback includes shared administrative observations highlighting the best, best practices currently being used, goals, the highlighting of those best practices in staff meetings, reflections and collaborative work on problems of practice, plus, minus, delta confidence line surveys with results sharing, and the use of Google Classroom for the purpose of identifying best practices and facilitation of collaboration. We also have the inclusion of teacher clarity questions in the teacher evaluations. Our key performance indicators are hundred percent of teachers answering the teacher clarity questions in their lesson plan, eighty percent of students answering the teacher clarity questions through the student lens, daily classroom observations using success criteria and focus on folk guide. And we inform teachers of non-negotiable expectations and create memos to highlight the best teaching practices. We also provide observations with best teaching practices to strengthen instruction during collaboration. We have dedicated professional teachers who want more for their students. We have productive and solution-focused professional learning and collaboration meetings that are part of our school culture. And our staff buys into the professional learning and the collaboration plan and are excited to work and create a better education for our students. We believe that if all teachers are clear, they provide think time and success criteria, that we will improve their performance. We also believe that by focusing on improving the reading ability, we will make improvements in reading schoolwide in our school, at our school. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Or do you have any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
I was going through here and first thing, I like how you are fo, focusing on T, teacher clare, clarity. It, it makes sense to kind of have them stop and think what they're teaching and why. And from the T, teachers per perspective, you have, you know, the, what, what it look, looks like, you know, what am I te, teaching? Why am I te, teaching it? Are you having them like put this in their less lesson plans or display this up in the, like as an objective for the stu, students to kind of know what the goal is? How are they showing that they're thinking about what they're te, teaching and why?
Okay, well, what we're doing is we're using examples in our professional development meetings and that, I don't know if you can see, you probably can't because I have a virtual background, but it's from the Teacher Clarity Playbook. And it's a hands-on guide and, and basically we walk through those questions in lesson plans. And that's what it has, we're in module one right now, we're moving on to module two and we'll do that in our next meeting. But it's a, what it does is it involves a breakdown of the standards into smaller chunks that can be interpreted as, as learning intentions. And then we talk about that and what we do is when we're lesson planning, we're in, we're asking the teachers to frame their lessons through those questions as they go on and then constantly referring back to those questions as we identify them. Um, it through the, um, observations and, and through the high, when, in, in highlighting best practices.
All right, thank, thank you so much. I, I love what, what you're do, doing out, out there. I love El, El Mirage and the little school that, that can and I, I expect great, great things and thank, thank you for, for an, answering my, my ques, question.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Trustee Ekis?
No, it was a good report though and just hang in there. I know you guys are kind of, you don't get to visit too much, but when the school's back, open back up, I would really like to come back and visit.
Oh, that sounds great. Excellent. Love to have.
No questions.
All right, well then.
I have a question, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were calling Trustee Turner or?
Yes, Trustee Left Front, I think Trustee Heinz had a question. Did you?
Okay. No, I was saying no questions, thank you.
No questions, I'm sorry. Okay, Trustee Left Front?
Mr. Brian, if you can go back to that slide that you have for staff survey and kind of go over it a little bit.
Okay. Um, so is this the one you were talking about, the staff survey fall of 2020?
Uh huh, so this is a survey that you gave to the staff, that the staff took, the teachers? Okay.
Um, I gave this using Google Forms. It was something that we did as a result of our study that we did of visible learning for literacy. And we identified some of the best practices that showed the highest, um, levels of success and, and there's, there's a hinge point in learning and it, I believe it's, I believe the leverage point is like point three five and if you learn a point three five, um, you'll do about average for the year. But the hinge point are all the strategies above point three five. So in the book, they identify.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please finish.
Okay, they identify a lot of strategies and they, they associate a, a number between point one for like grade level retention, two point three five. And I believe it was negative point one because it, it level, grade level retention has a negative effect. And so what we did was we, we talked about those different strategies and what those were and, and we pulled from, in the survey, we, we pulled, I believe there's five, five of the top ten to fifteen strategies that were identified in that book. And I can't remember what teacher clarity was, but it seems to me like it was point seven two. It may have been twice what the, the leverage point. So if teachers teach with teacher clarity, um, they, they have seen that it has a learning effect size of point seven two, which means that, um, students. they, they have seen that it has a learning effect size of point seven two, which means that, um, students are likely to learn twice as much that year if they understand those questions. The other thing that was considered was teacher credibility, um, it, it, you can see that i- its leverage point was higher, but, um, because of being able to really focus in on teacher credibility and, and not wanting to have too many things to focus on. And, and, and the other feedback that we got about focusing on literacy school-wide, we chose teacher clarity.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trustee Eckes?
Oh, I think I already said something.
Oh, you did? Okay, I guess.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I told him I wanted to come visit his school when they reopen, but it was a really good presentation.
Yes. Okay, my turn. The very good presentation of Brian, I really appreciate, you know, what you're doing there. And again, the teachers, they're doing a phenomenal job, especially doing distant learning. What I would like to know is, uh, what is the feedback on teachers' professional development? What feedback are you getting?
They're excited about the teacher professional development to have the opportunity to, um, work on im- improving their practice. And, and it's, it's been positive, they, they're, they're, um, there's been a lot of collaboration and then there's been a positive energy as far as working toward professional development. It's something that they've been, I think they've been looking for.
Oh, yes, over the years. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for providing that. And I see more to come. Okay, I think that's all I have. Um, thank you again for your presentation and, you know, we're looking forward to hearing from you again soon.
Thank you, board members, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet for the opportunity to present the professional learning and collaboration plan for El Mirage School.
Thank you, Brian. Great presentation. Appreciate the work you and your staff have put into this plan. And so next we have board, I'd like to welcome to the board, um, Ms. Carol Coburn, principal at George Visual and Performing Arts Academy. Carol.
Yeah, my, my presentation is hidden. All right, there we go. All right, uh, good evening, Board President Turner, um, Board Clerk LaFrenche, trustees Eckes, Bents and Hines, uh, good evening Cabinet and AES District Community. Uh, I am the proud principal at George Vision and Performing Arts. I wanted to also acknowledge my assistant administrator Christina Valenzuela, who is in the audience tonight, as well as many of our, uh, our, our staff members, uh, from George that are here tonight in support of, uh, me in present in presenting this to you tonight, but also to hear of the good things that are happening in our district. As you know, George is an extraordinary school that offers a well-rounded education to our students academically, artistically, and socially emotionally. Our school for, focus is visual performing arts, which is the heart and soul of our school. We currently serve six hundred and ninety students from all over our district, which offers our students, uh, within our districts, opportunities and pathways to career and college readiness, uh, based on their performing arts focus. Over the past five years, our school has grown academically because of our high expectations for students, parents, and staff. And also due to our collective efforts in focusing in on improving learning for our students. As you know, this past year has been a bit of a challenge. However, my teachers, my families, and my staff, including my bus drivers, have all met the challenge with perseverance, creativity, and optimism. Tonight, our professional learning plan, um, that I will be sharing with you shows where we are focusing our work for this school year. I want to thank, uh, my leadership team, who is, uh, helping to lead this vision and the work on our campus and, and with our teaching staff, uh, and also our teachers for, uh, being the change agents out there, uh, in helping us to transform, um, our work at George. It's letting me. There we go. Um, our work first started with us having to identify, uh, what I consider a problem of practice. We needed to narrow, uh, what our focus was. So we gave a survey, uh, to our teachers uh, in September, October to try to help narrow, uh, our focus because we know that we want to focus on everything. But we wanted to focus on a few things really well and develop them, um, according to where we see we needed to put more energy and efforts in. Um, and so our teachers identified, uh, inquiry and critical thinking, math improvement and development, parent engagement, and reading comprehension strategies. The administrators identified math improvement and development, lesson design and delivery, student engagement, and parent engagement as areas to consider. We additionally looked, um, at, uh, had many, many collaborative conversations, uh, with teachers and our leadership team. Looked at our EL performance data, looked at our school-wide data in English Language Arts, Mathematics. We looked at our attendance data. We looked at our, um, missing assignments, uh, that our students were missing at the beginning of the school year. Um, and we looked, um, at past performance data over the years. So with all that data in mind, our teachers had many, many discussions about where we should really focus, uh, these efforts. And the two that they highlighted in almost every conversation were parent engagement and student engagement. So with our parent engagement, our teachers wanted our work, um, to include teachers and parents working together to achieve high levels of communication and support. Especially important this year with distance learning, but this work will carry into future years. Because whether you're on campus or doing virtual learning, that communication and support is the key to student success. Our work, uh, this year, uh, is being accomplished by, um, teachers having office hours in which they're available to parents, um, as well as students, uh, to have conversations with them regarding academic concerns, uh, social emotional concerns, um, maybe teaching a parent how to go in and look to see if their child has completed their work. Lot of individual trainings, but also the district has been offering a lot of trainings in support of, of parents working with all of these brand new technical, technical programs, um, that we use on a daily basis. We also are using a consistent parent communication methods, uh, method school-wide. Uh, we have class dojo for many of our primary classrooms and then remind for our, um, intermediate and middle school classrooms. Um, these two, uh, programs, um, are really nice for us to use because they allow, uh, multiple languages, uh, to be used in that communication. So for example, for our Spanish-speaking parents, um, our teachers can broadcast a message to them. Those parents can trans- have it translated for them. Uh, and then they answer the teacher back and the teacher can have it translated, um, into English, uh, for them. So it's a great way to communicate back and forth. We also need to support our parents in helping them with resources that they might need. You know, with the pandemic, there's been a greater need for resources within our area. And so just having that access to the resources, um, and I did, um, show all those parents on our district webpage where we have that nice resource center, um, available, um, for them uh, during a coffee with the principal. Teachers also wanted a little bit more, uh, strategies of how to, uh, maybe better their practices in working with parents. Um, as well as they wanted to know about what resources were out there, uh, for parents as well. Because many times our parents go to our teachers first to ask for resources before coming to the school office. So all that information is the work that we are looking, looking to accomplish this year. What this would look like for our teachers as far as success is our teachers have the posted office hours. The parents are contacting them, uh, all the time. Not just the teacher contacting the parent all the time, but they're having that two-way communication back and forth. Our parents, um, our teachers see that our parents are using the Ares Parent, Parent Portal to really look at the academic progress of their students, to keep up on how many assignments maybe that they're missing, to monitor attendance. The teachers are getting more participation from the parents, um, maybe attending the office hours, asking for question, asking questions. Maybe coming, um, to the tutoring sessions in the afternoon that are provided by teachers for this, the individual, uh, students. And then for teachers, that communication, how often are these parents, you know, on a daily basis communicating with me? Or maybe I haven't heard from this parent in maybe five, seven days, I need to reach out to that parent. Uh, for our students, what it looks like for them is the students are ready for the day, they're ready to learn. Their behavior is better and, and yes, even through Zoom, we have student behavior that we need to work on, uh, just as we would in the regular classroom. Students are completing their assignments and they're accessing the resources that the teachers have, um, shown them how to use. They're participating and their effort is increased. So those are all, um, indicators of success. And as I go through classrooms, these are the things that I look for as well. For student engagement, which is our second focus, um, that we chose, um, our teachers and students are working together. And this is not one-sided, it's not just what the teachers are doing to engage, but it's actually the students learning how to get themselves engaged in the lesson as well. And we call it demonstrating that passion for learning. So we have to teach our students how to be passionate about their own learning. You know, for some of our kids, academics is not their strong point. And at George, we have our visual performing arts. So maybe their passion is their music, or their passion is their drama or their art. So teaching them how to be passionate, uh, for their learning. This is achieved through student curiosity, uh, peer interaction as much as possible. Engagement with learning activities that is designed by the teachers. Uh, and the teachers designing the curriculum to get students more involved and engaged in their learning. Our work, we have, um, done a lot of staff development this year, um, starting the beginning of the year where we, uh, worked on, uh, building relationships with students because that's the key. Once you have that, uh, relationship with a student, it's a working relationship. They're more apt to do what you're asking them to do, to, to take that extra step forward. You know, to spend that little extra five minutes with you after class, even though they want to go have lunch. You know, so just, we're, we're getting that relationship going. Uh, it moved into how to develop that, uh, relationship with parents and that communication system back and forth. And then it moved into, uh, looking at engaging strategies to get kids more interactive in class so that they aren't just sitting back on the other side of the Zoom. You know, not, not responding to you or, um, showing their learning in some way. Our teachers, um, will be using and, and have been using research-based teaching strategies and resources that are provided. We have many, many, many teacher experts and I, I can't emphasize how many experts I have on my campus. Uh, we're very fortunate to have, um, you know, a plethora of experience, uh, with different programs. With, uh, you know, different expertise in, uh, content areas. Um, and so we utilize those teacher experts on campus to work with each other in collaboration, uh, during staff meeting times and in training. Um, our focus for student engagement is on lesson design, delivery, data collection, reflection, and then refining that lesson. So that, that whole planning process. And so if we can design those lessons that are keeping the kids, uh, interacting and engaged in their learning and showing them that passion, um, we're going to have pretty good data coming through. Our reflection, not only from teacher reflection, but we want student reflection, you know? How did you feel about that lesson? You know, how do you like that, you know, that strategy? You know, they've got to learn different ways to learn, uh, and try to get as many of the different teaching modalities in as, as we can. Um, and then refine the process, make, uh, changes where we need to. Keep the things that are working really ware- well and share that knowledge with each other. A lot of collaborations between, uh, between our, uh, grade levels this year, cross-grade levels as well as within the grade levels. Uh, we also developed a must-haves, uh, list. So we know that a lesson plan has every, you know, all these different components in it. But we thought, which ones are the most important to have regarding student engagement? And so collectively with the staff, uh, we came up with clear goals and objectives. Student responsiveness and accountability and checking for understanding. Those were the three elements of every lesson that we, we are going to be looking for as, as the teacher. Am I, you know, am I clear in my goals and objectives? How my students been responsive? And what's their accountability? So I, that they can be, um, checking to see, am I, am I on task? Am I doing my work? And then how do the teachers check, you know, for that learning? So those are the three elements that, uh, we all agreed, uh, at our site. Our must-haves in every lesson that we teach to our students. For teachers in the classroom, it looks like, you know, they can check, are they providing those opportunities for students to interact? You know, we know that not every lesson, maybe we can have the students interact throughout the whole thing, but we want to increase that so that they are interacting more. Designing and adapting lessons for all of our students, uh, with those engaging teaching strategies. We want our students to feel safe in the classroom so that they will, you know, put forth, you know, maybe try it out, not be afraid, you know, that others are going to make fun of them. So that they can engage with that learning as well. We want to connect with the students. Again, that's that relationship piece that we thought was critical, uh, even the beginning of the year. Uh, because once that rapport is established, that child is feels more comfortable in working with the teacher. And then again, teachers are looking for taking risks themselves, um, in trying out new strategies, new lesson designs. You know, talking with each other, getting feedback from each other. So teachers have to be willing to take that risk as well. If we're asking our students to take that risk, as teachers, we need to take that risk as well. For our students, our success will be shown with them asking lots of questions, participating, uh, interacting with the teachers and the other students, especially when they go in breakout rooms. Putting forth energy, um, relating and connecting to what they're learning. You know, how does this relate to my life? How, you know, how does it connect to maybe a career I'm interested in? Um, again, we can tell that they're feeling safe in their learning environment when they're participating more, when their camera's on more. Uh, when they're, they're asking questions or coming to office hours to clarify. Um, and then just being emotionally present. When we can see that the student is emotionally present, they're invested in their learning. So our work this year, um, has included quite a bit. We started the year and, and the guidance, uh, that we used was out of the Distance Learning Playbook for grades K-12. Teaching for Engagement and Impact in Any Setting. Um, it is by, uh, you know, some of the top leading, uh, research, uh, people out there, Douglas Fisher, Nancy Frey, and John Hattie. And so those are, you know, leading experts in learning. We wanted to make sure that we started, you know, with a credible, um, research-based, uh, practices and approaches and our work led us to this book. We also u- utilized, uh, Elevation, which is our English learner, uh, program that we use for data collection and monitoring. But within Elevation, they also have Elevation Strategies that are the research-based best practices, uh, for our English learners. Uh, we know that they're proven for English learners, but they are strategies that work for all learners as well. And then we also purchased NearPod, uh, with the approval of the board. So thank you, uh, board for approving this for us. Uh, which is a student engagement platform that's interactive technology. It has relevant research-based content and pedagogy for our teachers. This platform of, it focuses in on the teacher and the student. For our teachers, it empowers them to create lessons, uh, that yield higher levels of student engagement. For our teachers, it empowers them to create lessons that yield higher levels of student engagement and reinforce learning with formative assessment. So the teacher is able to tell throughout their lesson, you know, how the kids are doing with the content, with their answers, whether they need to go back and review something or maybe the, the students are getting it, they can move a little faster with their lesson. For our students, it increases their participation. It activates the 21st century skills with a lot of the technology pieces, with the collaboration, we know that those are two skills that are critical for moving on in career and college. And it then helps them to create real-world connections with dynamic media. So we have access to some of the, the top video clips out there, virtual learning, some of the credible websites, BBC, Teaching Tolerance is in there, so really good resources for our students to, to work from, to help build that real-world connection. And for our parents, the parent engagement side, we have that Ares Portal and we've done a lot of efforts to get our parents to sign up for it and to go back in and use it. You're setting up the accounts and then training on how, how it works. We also are using that ClassDojo and Remind to connect with them. We've held parent-teacher conferences so that we can get that individual, you know, time with the teacher to discuss specifics on goals, where progress, you know, how our, our students are doing, areas of support needed. We, we're coming up on another set in March, so we're looking forward to working with our parents again. We've provided access to parent trainings and we will continue to do that through the end of the school year and, and well into next school year as well. And then providing parent resources to our parents. And we have developed some key performance indicators, but I do want to let you know that these are still in draft, so we're still working on some of them. But we are thinking 98% of our parents using Ares Portal to engage their child's progress in school, that will help create success. We want 95 to 100% of parents using the school communication systems of ClassDojo and Remind. We want our students to score a four to five on reflection surveys and the survey would be on their level of engagement during lessons. So the, the students are rating themselves on, on whether they're engaged, teachers can look to see, to cross-check data to see, you know, if the level of engagement is where the student thinks it is. 100% of our teachers are using the must-haves in content area lessons. And then we want to also see a 5% or more increase in our academic growth in ELA and Math. And right now, we're going to be using our STAR system to kind of help track that data. Another key performance indicator that we're talking about is related to student assignments, you know, and completion, so. But we are in development at this phase, so I want to thank my leadership team for really taking the time to be detailed and think this through so that we can get some good indicators in place. Feedback. Dr. Mitchell always tells us that all feedback is good, but not all feedback is good. Feedback is critically important in order to grow and to continue to make progress. So though, although you may get some feedback that maybe isn't so great, you need to hear it. You need to digest, you know, what's being said, reflect on it, have some conversations so that you can maybe approach it a different way and a different manner. So here are the ways in which we believe our feedback will have positive impact from our school. So administrators do classroom walkthroughs and we get collective feedback. So we take all of the things that, that we see that are working really well out there and we share it with the staff at staff meetings to highlight some of the things that we see going on that are working really well in hopes that other teachers will say, hey, you know, I keep hearing about this strategy of using a flip grid, I need to, I need to know how to do that, you know, it sounds exciting. And so they'll go to their peers and they'll, they'll ask, you know, for some training on it. We have our teacher experts, as I said, we have many in our campus and they're working collaboratively with, with each other, helping in whatever area, answering questions and getting that expertise shared throughout our campus. Those collaborative conversations are great because, you know, we're all working together and to make this effort, to make this change, and we want to see it happen and that happens when everybody is on board with it and we've thought it through really well. That goes with our next one, which is our reflection. We have our plus, delta, minus in our competence lines to share results. So after we have our, our meetings, we talk about what went well, what we need to change, what was missing and our confidence level on being able to take it back and either share it with our students, with our peers and with our parents. We do goal setting and progress monitoring to make sure that we're moving along the path at a good pace. And our leadership team really looks at the goal setting and is monitoring the progress as well. To wrap it up for tonight, we are working towards transforming our school community and teaching together. And so here I have our Pyramid of Success. And this is something that we've been working on since I came to the school in 20, I think it's 2014 is when I first started there. It centers around three concepts, competence, connectiveness, and compassion. With these three areas, you have a solid foundation for success. So you see success is on the top of our pyramid up there. Outside of the pyramid, you'll see our school community working together to build support in our pyramid. We have everywhere, everyone from our child nutrition services, our bus drivers, our proctors, paraprofessionals, our counselor, our office staff, our school board, district office support, administrators, teachers, parents, students, our librarian or custodians, everybody that's, that makes up our school community is outside, helping to support this pyramid of success. Inside, we're working on different areas. We start at the bottom level, which is our compassion, we have our social emotional learning, our motivation and our school, school pride. These areas are what are really helping to build that compassion for our students or, or teach them how to have compassion. In the middle, we have our connectiveness. So how are we going to communicate with each other? The level of engagement we have at our school and how we have our rapport or our relationship building. Those three things are the key to that connected, connected, I can't say the word, connectedness piece. Next, we have our competence and this is our academic and artistic abilities in our students. So we believe that those two, those two things are critical in getting them confident so where they're feeling confident they can go out and in the world and, you know, achieve whatever success and career path that they, they choose. With high expectations, supports in place for our students, a growth mindset and the belief that we are all making a difference in our school community, together, we will achieve what we have set out to do and plan tonight. I want to thank you for allowing me to share our plan with you tonight and thank you again for always supporting George, you know, and making all the things that we are able to do for our students possible. Thank you for the programs that you've approved, the resources that you've given us, the tools that you've given us in our toolbox. Together, we all are going to be able to achieve the excellence that we have set forth because of the efforts that we have all put into our school community. So thank you. And now I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Coburn. I've just been advised that our president's computer shut down.
Of course.
He's trying to log back on. Xenia, if you could check on our, on the president and Ms. Benz, I'll turn over you to facilitate questions.
I believe Trustee Turner is online. She is with us.
Oh, okay. Ms. Turner?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we got you. Thank you. Okay. You got an echo because you probably have it on two devices. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
One of the devices you got turned off.
I have my phone.
Okay.
Why don't we give a minute for Ms. Turner to, I'm trying to resolve that. Xenia, you can have Chris, Chris, can you give her a call real quick? Ms. Benz, would you mind facilitating questions from the board?
I think Ms. French is supposed to do that.
Ms. French is the clerk.
I apologize. I'm, I'm back a couple more.
Thanks, Holly.
Oh, you're welcome.
My apologies, creature of habit.
Mr. Benz could have done it.
It's not me now.
I did notice how Ms. Benz wouldn't answer me.
I was like, no, it's not my job.
My apologies, Trustee LaFrench, could you, could you facilitate the board's questions? Thank you.
I will do my best. Let's start, let's start with Ms. Heinz. Or should I ask, are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think it was a wonderful presentation. What stood out for me was just, I kept hearing communication, communication, communication. And, you know, that cultivating and motivating and keeping the lines of that two-way communication that, that you were sharing. I think that is so critical, you know, during this school year that we've experienced and even me personally, I, I felt more connected because there were tools and the, you know, the digital communication was in place that I never really used before, but being able to reach out and connect and speak to teachers and check on your child and getting the daily reports and, and even daily is just wonderful. So, you know, I just wanted to say, continue that great work, keep the lines of communication open and, and I think that, that is a great focus. I was, I was excited to see it again on the pyramid because that is so important right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do, or, or comment. I like the pyramid. That is really, really cool. That is a great thing and I really feel since everybody's doing this Zoom thing and the, we just got to keep these kids engaged and by keeping the parents engaged with the students, that's a big plus because, you know, if the parents are, I understand some of them have to work or they got things to do, I get that. But if they are available and they're there to help their kids learn and guide them in a physical form through the Zoom meeting with the teacher, I think that's awesome, you know? Whether they're learning together or working together, just having your mom or dad or, or an adult with you helping you, especially when you're younger, got, you know, guide you through everything, I think that's wonderful. It, it brings them closer, not only as, as a parent and a child, but it also helps them engage and understand a lot more. Cause I'm sure you've all heard me talk, you know, if I was a little kid, I don't know if I could do any of this and I was a latchkey kid, my mom wasn't home to help me, I would be lost, completely lost. So, I don't know, getting the parent, the parents involved, I think that's wonderful and I'm sure it's really helping too, it's got to be. So anyway, that was very good. I appreciate your presentation and again, I like that pyramid. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Benz?
Um, I just want, want to say, I really like how the schools pick what is important, like each school is its own entity and sees its own needs and sees where it has to improve and that these school can take the ownership. And the district isn't come, coming down and saying, you have to learn this or you need to work on this, you know? Where, where every school can, can go through collab, collaborate and choose what they want to folk, focus on. And I do like how George picked parent, parent involvement. I have parents who work and I have parents who are like, I don't know, know the math. So I don't know the math, so I can't help my, my, my kid because I teach, teach fifth grade, you know? So it's like, okay, let's, so I, I try to make my, my things available online for them and sometimes they, they mess, message me on ClassDojo at eight, nine o'clock, we got a question, question and it's like, okay, what? Cause I'm in bed, you know, I'm in bed. It's like, okay. So, but I really like how you're trying to bring the parent, parents in to help motivate the students. And I really do believe that it's going to be long lasting that you're plant, planting seeds that are going to grow as you get back into the classroom. So I, I think that that's great. So thank, thank you for that.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Okay, well.
Adam President, she is back online.
Thank the Lord. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. My computer just completely shut down and I'm like, oh my goodness, I started it back up and now I'm on my phone. So I did.
Welcome back and I'm glad that you're back. My turn to talk, but I am so grateful you're back. I have thousands of papers and I said, now I got to get to number seven, what am I saying now? Okay, so I'm glad you're back.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee LaFrench.
So I have these glasses that I take on and off because they're new. I can't see with them or without them. So after listening to your presentation, Ms. Kira, I appreciate you and your staff and all the things that you guys are doing over at George. I have a couple of things I jotted down, which was, you know, thank you for having high expectations, you know, for the students of Adelanto. When you started off by saying that you have high expectations, when you have high expectations, then you're not going through the days saying that it's okay for children to get ones and twos because your expectation, the bar that you have set is high, that the staff that you have around you, your teachers and everyone have the expectations that our children can learn, our children can succeed and they don't have to be one and two students. Um, another thing that I wanted to comment on is the, how you put emphasis on the consistency of communicating with the parents, communicating with the parents. When you're communicating with the parents, that brings success for the, for the students because it helps the parents understand and the parents feel valued at home right now. Let's see. When you spoke about building relationships with the students, the teachers and the students, building relationships, when students feel as if someone cares, if someone, if they can feel that, they want to turn their cameras off, they want to be engaged, that comes from the relationships between the teacher and the student. Your teachers having the, taking the time over at George to have set hours to make sure that, you know, they're communicating with parents through ClassDojo, using those tools and you taking the time out to, to give, to give like, what do you call it? Making yourself available to be able to give workshops so parents can understand, you know, how to use Ares, you know, to go on there. The more that teachers and, and principals and, and parents, you know, communicate and collaborate, that's more, that brings the success for the children. Your PowerPoint was phenomenal. That, that pyramid, wonderful. I appreciate everything that you and your staff are doing over there at George. You're doing a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will relay that information back to my staff.
And thank you, Ms. Turner, for reappearing.
Okay, has everyone commented already?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I was able to see your presentation. I logged back in. I was able to catch the end. You know, Ms. Corbin, you're, I'm really impressed with your presentation. And what, what inspired me is when you said teacher experts. You know, you have tons of teacher experts at your school site. What, what is a teacher expert? Could you explain that?
Sure, absolutely. So we have many teachers that are really personally passionate about teaching and have found, you know, a strategy, taking their time. and have found, you know, a strategy, taking their time to learn more about it, dive deeper into content so that they can fully understand it and are very confident in being able to deliver it not only to their students, but to teach it to another teacher, you know, on how to do it, replicate it for their classroom through modeling, through working with that teacher, maybe one-on-one or in a small group to develop or lesson plan together. And so those are the experts that I consider expert on campus.
Wonderful, wonderful. And you're teaching students how to be passionate about learning.
Yes.
Is that by setting, you mentioned setting clear goals and objectives?
Yep. And as well as, you know, working with them on their growth mindset, you know? You know, it's not something that comes easy to some people. You know, some people just aren't passionate about learning. And you have to find, you have to dig deep to find what it is they're passionate about and see how you can incorporate that into their learning and their strategies. I brought up art, music, drama, you know, because we have that at our class or at a school. Sometimes that's what the student is passionate about, you know? And so if you can show them that passion for learning, you can try and spill that over into the passion for learning math or the passion for learning language arts and see how it can be tied together. So some students, it takes a lot longer to try to build that. In fact, we probably still have some students we're still working on to get there. But my teachers are determined to work with their kids to try to teach them how to be passionate about their own learning and, you know, take charge of their own learning.
Thank you. I won't keep you long. I was really, I'm really impressed. And you guys are doing a phenomenal job there at George. And, you know, I can't wait until we start instruction, in-person instruction. You know, this will be, I could just see our schools booming, you know, growing academically all over, all of our schools, basically. And so I'm really excited about, you know, getting back to instruction and in-person instruction. But we're not going to rush it. We have to wait until we get it right. But thank you so much for your presentation. I really appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Okay, if that's it, on. Dr. Mitchell, did you have any questions or did you want to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank you, Kira, for a great presentation and your staff. And I really see your staff's fingerprint on this work. And thank you so much for your efforts. And I want to thank all three of our principals and their staffs and those teachers that are on classified stuff that are on, watching and supporting your schools. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. It's really clear that, I think that trustee Benz summed it up. What we're after with this is really a school-based plan that is owned and energized by the staff themselves to identify learning that they want to have and they believe will accelerate student performance. Because we know that each school is unique and we knew that context matters. And what makes our schools unique are the unique staff that work at each of our schools. And so this plan and this approach allows for that individuality while at the same time keeping a high bar around teacher professional development and learning and collaboration, which we believe is the key lever to moving schools. And so thank you so much for those brief statements. Enjoyed them all. Work to getting back to work as trustee Turner said. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you. I totally agree with that. Okay, moving on to section seven, academic services, Williams Settlement, second quarter report as compliance for tasks for the California Department of Education. Okay. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you. Dr. Williams, if you could talk a little bit about this. It's just our standard Williams report. And love for you to walk us through. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and AASD family. This is just a regular report that we're required to bring to the board on a quarterly basis. This is our Williams report, second quarter. Based on the information that we have back from the county, they look at several areas, including instructional materials, our SARC reports, our school facilities, teacher assignments, and we have no findings to report.
Okay, thank you. Can I, we need a motion to approve the Williams report. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve.
Actually, Madam President, this is just a recommendation.
It's a recommendation. There's no.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to 702, approve resolution 20.21.14, excuse absence of trustee Hines on February 9th, 2021. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by trustee Eckes.
A second.
A second by trustee LaFrenche. Any discussion? Okay, I have a discussion.
February, we're in.
February, this is this, okay, this one says. We're on, oh, on 702, okay, for January 19th. I'm sorry. Okay, now this item was brought back to the board because it was a misunderstanding. We approved this item. Actually, we rejected this item at the last board meeting. But later, we were under the, we got information that it was reported that trustee Hines did call in prior to the meeting and indicated that she was sick. So we brought this item back for approval. So this is January 19th. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm looking at two different screens. So the motion to approve by trustee Eckes and a second by trustee LaFrenche. Any further discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote.
trustee Benz?
Aye.
trustee Eckes?
Aye.
trustee Hines?
I'll abstain.
trustee LaFrenche?
Aye.
trustee Turner?
trustee Turner, aye, motion pass four with a, four, aye, and one abstain. So motion pass. Okay, now we'll move to section, item 7.03, approve resolution 2021.16, excuse absence of trustee Amy Hines on February 9th, 2021.
I motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by trustee Eckes. Is there a second?
I mo, motion, I second it.
I have a motion by, a second by trustee Benz. Okay, any discussion? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Benz.
So this one was the one where there was no call, no text or anything?
Yes.
Okay. Just maybe making sure.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I was under the impression the superintendent said he did hear from her. Is that true, mister?
So, board, I did hear from trustee Hines on the 19th. I did not on the February 1st.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, it's imperative that board members, you know, we have to take our positions very seriously. We're being looked at by our community, our staff. And if we don't call in when we have to report to a meeting, then that's not showing good leadership on our behalf. You know, we must call in. We must let someone know that we will not be making a meeting. And with that being said, you know, we meet twice a month. We may have a special meeting, but it's very important that we show up because we're setting an example for our staff. And we can't have teachers not coming into work and not calling in or bus drivers not showing up to drive our kids to school and not calling in. Our kitchen staff not calling, our cafeteria staff not showing up to cook food without letting someone know. So it's very important that we come to our meetings. If we're sick, we have to call in as soon as possible before the meeting to let someone know that we're sick. So with that being, and we're on Zoom. And so we don't have to leave our homes, you know, we can, we don't even have to show our faces if we're sick. We could just come on here and vote. And then if we have to leave early, if we're not feeling good, but at least come on if we can. Okay, so with that being said, if there's no other comments, I would like to call for the vote.
I would like to make a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Well, first thing also, I noticed that my name was misspelled here. So I don't know if we need to correct it under the recommendation, first name. And secondly, you know, I don't think a lot of people, the public, I try to be transparent. But, you know, I've been months recovering from COVID. And so when I'm looking that it says excused, there was a setback that I had. I was on medication. And honestly, I slept the whole day through everything till the next day. My doctor has validated and said that, you know, she was, actually, she has not fully released me to come back to work. However, I do take my position seriously. As my health has improved, I've, you know, attempted to come back. And I did think it would be sooner and faster. But the symptoms are just broad, unknown and varies. So I do have, you know, the doctor's note excusing the absence that I have not taken opportunity to submit to our superintendent. But I just want to say that I was not well. I got prescribed medication and I had an adverse reaction to it. And I slept, I woke up at 2:30 in the morning, a.m., which is about the time that I was ready to reach out and say, you know, say something. So I didn't contact the superintendent until the next day. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you, trustee.
Yeah, and I just, I'd like to make a comment. I know she's been very ill and, you know, I've been trying to reach out to her. I've been praying for her. I feel like we're all adults and, you know, things happen. It's just part of life. And I know we're all very responsible. And again, things just happen. So, you know, I'm glad to see her back on. I'm so happy. She looks better. So I'm just grateful she's back, you know? And I, I don't know, I'm just going to give her the benefit of the doubt because I'm just so happy to see her. And again, I know we're all professional. We're adults. And I just know things happen. And, you know, maybe, I don't know. I, my heart just goes out to her. So it's good to see you, Amy.
Thank you. You too.
Yeah, I understand. But then again, like if, like, when was it? The night when we had the reorg, she was out, you were out. And if Turner, myself, or LaFrenche, something happened that we could not come in, then we'd have no quorum. So we have to try to get in contact by text or something. And understand that, you know, again, that what we do here is important. And if we don't have quorum, nothing gets done. And then we're kind of dead in the water. So just for the future, we all need to make sure that we stay in contact, you know, because this is big, bigger than the nuts, you know? This is, this is school business that we have to conduct. And, you know, just please always try as much as you can to just get in. We all should make sure that if we think we're not going to make it as soon as possible, please contact someone so that, you know, plans can be made or strategies can be made so that we're not left without a quorum and then unable to do school business.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll call for the vote.
trustee Benz?
Aye.
trustee Eckes?
Aye.
trustee Hines?
I'll abstain.
trustee LaFrenche? I think she's muted.
LaFrenche, nay.
trustee Turner?
trustee Turner, nay. Motion fail with lack of a quorum. Okay. Moving on to 703, approve, no, seven, I'm sorry. Moving on to section eight, policies, introductions, updates and readings. Approve, adopt and approve, second reading for board policy, 4156.2, 4256.2, 4356.2, administrative regulation for 4156.2, 4256.2, 4356.2, awards and recognition. Can I get a motion?
I motion, Eckes?
I have a motion by trustee Eckes. Is there a second?
A sec, second by Benz?
I have, and a second by trustee Benz. Any discussion?
Yeah, board members that meet those qualifications, do we get our pins at the next ceremony? I want my pins. I think I'm up for two of them.
Okay, okay, well, that's, Dr. Mitchell? Do you have any comments on that?
According to the policy, it says even board members, we were entitled to our years of service. So I was just curious, are we going to get those at the next award ceremony or?
Well, we should.
I think so.
I think so. Okay.
Okay, just a question and a comment.
Hi, trustee Turner. We typically give our awards at the end of the school year. So we would certainly take that, we'll remember that when the awards come around.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the votes.
trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
trustee Eckes?
Aye.
trustee Hines?
Hines, aye.
trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, aye.
trustee Turner?
trustee Turner, aye, motion pass five zero. Moving on to section, I mean, item 8.2, adoption and approve, second reading for board policy, 4119.25, 4219.25, 4319.25, political activities of employees and administrative regulation, 4119.25, 4219.25, 4319.25, political activities of employees. Can I get a motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
To approve?
I have a motion by trustee LaFrenche. And a second.
I second.
And a second by trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
trustee Eckes?
Nay.
trustee Hines?
Hines, aye.
trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, aye.
trustee Turner?
trustee Turner, aye, motion pass four one. Section, item 8.03, adoption and approve, second reading for board policy, 4119.11, 4219.11, 4319.11, sexual harassment and administrative regulation, 4119.11, 4219.11, 4319.11. We need to correct that. Sexual harassment. Can I get a motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee LaFrenche. Is there a second?
I second.
A second by trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
trustee Eckes?
Aye.
trustee Hines?
Trustee Hines?
Hines, aye.
Trustee La French?
Love French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion pass five zero. Okay, uh, moving on to, um. Section nine superintendent report, events and future activities significant to the district, Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, trustee. Have a lot of announcements, I'll try to be. As brief as I can, I wanna start off by, um, congratulating. Uh, our own Andrea Perdil. She's had a stellar career over thirty, thirty plus years and so. Although I'm so happy for her and her transition to the new chapter in her life, we're so happy, so, uh, so saddened to lose her. Uh, she's been absolutely critical to our team and especially with me coming on, I knew in the district. I relied on, uh, Andrea incredibly, I've appreciated her professionalism. And her knowledge of her practice and her, her trade, I've also appreciated her, her, her candor. Uh, she gave it to me straight all the time and, and that's been very appreciative and I, I will, uh, her leadership will be sorely missed here. In Alatso Elementary, but we wish her the best. And, uh, wish her, uh, success in her new chapter of her life. And, um, I'm sure to be calling her over the next few months. Um, getting her guidance and reflection, so thank you Andrea for all that you've contributed here in Alatso. Uh, you will be missed, so, but congratulations to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like the board, I'd like to give, uh, the board and the community a, a small update if I could on, uh. On a COVID status for the state and the, and the region, it has significantly changed over the last few weeks and so I wanna just do a quick. Overview for the, for the education of our community as well as the board. You see the PowerPoint, I have COVID nineteen, that's a big, y'all see that?
Yes.
Much.
So, um, I, 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 thank you, uh, Mr. Quintero, he, he puts together. Uh, an update for our COVID status across the region and the state, uh, every, every week and as it changes. And so just wanted to just show the community kind of where we are, uh, so that we're dealing with facts, um, so the first, so the first thing. I wanna share is just again, the, the, the tier levels, as you know, uh, California is currently in widespread. Which means more than seven new daily cases a day and having a positivity rate of eight percent. In order for us to transition to the red tier, which is substantial, we would need to be in the four to seven range for two weeks. Uh, we currently, uh, will start that two weeks and actually next week or this week. Uh, so we would need to go another two weeks for the state to go into red, for us to consider opening up. Um, there are, there are folks that are, uh, the state has allowed for districts with a waiver. And twenty five cases or less to open up now, and so some of our peers are opening up. I would also like to, like the board to consider that, that in the media, when you hear that schools are opening up. It's a very, it's a very broad and general term, most of the time they're talking about cohorts, which are very few kids. Coming a couple days a week for a couple hours and they're saying that's opening up, and so the, there, it's, it's been real. Dicey as it relates to, there's no one just fully opening up, all kids, all teachers, all staff, every day. Uh, that's not happening much across the state, so I do want the board to hear, that when you hear the word opening up, that it actually. There are some tiers within, within that, that statement of opening up. And so, uh, we're, we're looking, we're, we're glad that the rates are decreasing across the state and the region. Uh, we're glad that our hospitalizations are going down and our deaths are going down, we, we're seeing, um, a. A light at the end of this terrible tunnel that we've been going through, and so we're hopeful that the rates keep dropping. This is a graphic, I think it's a powerful graphic to look at, so across San Diego County, we had a high of one hundred and fifty five cases per day. That was, uh, loo- looks like late January to now, it's less than about fifteen cases per day, so you can see across the San Diego County. Um, drastic drop in, in, uh, in new cases. Um, this is the positivity rate. Uh, it's twenty four point one percent and it's high, it's down to six point one for the county, so that's, that's very promising news that, so the, in actuality. Uh, we are experiencing a decline, steep, the stark, uh, trend leveled down. Uh, in terms of COVID, so it looks like, uh, we're, we're, we're coming out of this pandemic. Um, for the city of Adalanto, you'll see a stark decline from February. Uh, at a one, one hundred and fifty nine cases per one hundred thousand, it's extremely high. Exceeded the state and county averages, you see we're dropping, dropped down to fourteen point two as of today.
Wow.
Stark, stark complaint, uh, case rate, here's the city of Victorville, same thing, Victorville's still a little higher. At nineteen point seven, but there were, Victorville was a high of one eighty three, we share both cities, obviously, we have schools in both. Both cities, so we thought it's important to share both cities, but the trend is going in the right direction, look, we started. Back here in September, and so we're almost to September levels, so we're really happy about that. Uh, we, board, we, we did a, we conducted a survey of parents to see what their thoughts are. These numbers, uh, about almost seven hundred of our parents responded. And we just sent this survey out on Friday and we've had seven hundred responses, we asked them if schools were reopening a hundred percent in-person model. Would you send your children to school? Um, and you'll see about half say no, uh, half say yes, and half say no and maybe. So our parents are still really on the fence, just wanted to share a little bit of data, we're actively co- collecting data and so this is an ongoing. Of, um, uh. Uh, survey for our parents to get a sense, uh, for their tolerance for, uh, and willingness to send their children to school right now. We also asked them about the summer, if the district offers an in-summer, in-person summer school session, would you send your children to school? A little bit higher percentage of saying, uh, oh, I'm sorry, a little bit lower percentage of saying yes. Um, and large percentage saying, saying no, so we still see some apprehension from our parents. Um, regarding, uh, safety, so we'll continue to survey our parents just to get a sense for where their thoughts are. Uh, you know, a- after all, we can't have school if we don't have parents wanting to send their children to school and so. Just wanted to share that data with, with the community and we'll continue to collect this data, each board, so. Each board meeting, um, through the spring board, I plan on giving a real quick snapshot of where we are with COVID. And where we are with our surveys, um. Uh, we still have every intention to, um, maintain, uh, distance learning through June. And, uh, start with, start a reopening model with a soft reopening in the summer, in, in the context of a summer learning model. A so- summer learning session and then, um, use that to kind of, uh, test our systems and then. Full open in August if the, if the environment, uh, supports that, so, so we're just giving you, this is just for information. I wanted to share with you our plans for opening in the summer. If I could, real quickly. And something that we're working on right now, just wanted to keep the board apprised of what we're doing, so I've given you a COVID nineteen update, I wanna talk to you about. What we're calling the learning recovery summer session. And so. We want to, um, again, we always go back to the five core values for reopening, uh, to ensure the reopening of our schools safely. As well as provide a high quality instructional program, we will number one. Adhere to COVID safety guidelines to protect the health, safety and wellness of students and staff. Number two, identify and develop supports to meet the social and emotional needs of students and staff, provides. School leaders, teachers and support staff with training. Resources and supports to successfully implement a high quality instructional program. Number four, provide differentiated instructional supports to meet the needs of all students. And number five, sorry, uh, provide timely and transparent, uh, in- information and communication to staff, parents. And community members related to our reopening and so, we, the reason I, we go back to our core values is because we believe. That if we make decisions from these core values, uh, the decisions that we make will, will be bet- will be best. For, uh, to protect the safety and wellness and well-being of our staff and students, which is paramount. I know to this board and I, and to this, and to our administration, so, wanted to just keep sharing that. Um, we've, we have formed, uh, three committees to discuss a summer learning session. Uh, one committee will be focused on instruction. This, this committee will develop guidance for curriculum instruction and assessment, student registration. Uh, and, and then what, what student groups will prioritize, teacher and parent training and student supports. The second committee that they'll meet concurrently will focus on, um, COVID sa- COVID nineteen safety guidelines. Uh, personal protective equipment, social distancing, sanitizing, COVID testing, vaccination. Facilities readiness, as well as logistics for student transportation and nutrition. Yesterday, we met with cabinet and our union leaders to talk to them about, uh, the, our, our summer learning plans. As well as these committees that we asked them to participate on, tomorrow, we have a meeting with all management, we'll ask that, uh, managers, uh. Uh, populate these committees with, uh, three, uh, certificated staff and three classified staff from each school. As well as, uh, as well as, uh, having appropriate representation from our district offices. To make sure that we're hearing all the voices in the room, to make sure that we consider all the factors and variables. That would help us to have a safe and successful, uh, summer learning session, uh, for the summer, so we'll start those meetings. Uh, first week of, uh, March, second week of March, and we'll complete that committee work by the end of March. We plan on bringing the full plan, uh, to the board on, uh, March twenty third. Uh, where we'll be able to lay out exactly all the decisions that are made for the summer learning session. And then also wanna share with you. Three, uh, the, we have a third committee, uh, the, uh, our communications committee will be led by, of course, our public information officer, Mr. Quintero. But he's the one developing survey instruments, I'll, I'll, I've shared, uh, one survey instrument. That we've given to parents already with you board, I'll share another one as relates to vaccines in a moment. But, um, but he'll continue to administer surveys to get a, a good sense from staff and students and parents. Uh, to gather, uh, uh, input for our reopening and then, um, he'll work with our, both committees. To make sure that we are communicating the decisions, uh, and areas of discussion for our, uh. For, for, for the, uh, for our summer learning program and concurrently to that, I'll be facilitating, um, some supper with the superintendents. Board, Xenia has been good enough to place those on your calendar already, hoping to see, um, you all there. Again, we'll do another round of supper with the superintendents and basically I'll do four meetings. Where I've clustered the schools in four quadrants and we'll be inviting those parents to give those some updates or rat- work around. As well as an opportunity for input, uh, for the reopening, uh, for our summer learning session. And so we'll continue that and then if applicable, um, it is a summer session and will be all voluntary for staff and students. But if there is some applicable MOUs or sign letters that need to be bargained, we certainly will hit the table with our partners to bargain those MOUs aside. Letters if that's applicable. Um. Here's what it looks like, we have three goals, so we wanna provide an intervention for targeted student groups. Uh, we're looking at, um, we're looking at about six hundred kids. Uh, fifty teachers, all voluntary, both, both for students and staff, one session we can do fifty. Another session we can do another fifty, so we has the potential to do twelve hundred kids if we run both sessions. Uh, but, but we're looking at our dollars to make sure we can support that, but our goal, our first goal is to provide intervention to target the student groups. Uh, number two is to build some capacity to do some staff development around, uh, with, with teachers over the summer as well, we'll, we'll launch out on a. On a, on a robust professional learning program this summer, uh, for teachers to engage in. And then, uh, number three, our goal is that once we kick kids on campus. We will assess our readiness to handle, uh, kiddos back on our, on our schools and make sure that we're. Our sanitizing, uh, procedures and protocols are, are, are good, making sure that our, uh, you know, our e-dress. And our walkways, um, are good and so, you know, some of the things we just won't know until kids hit the campus. Mr. Kraus and his team will be doing a school by school audit of buildings to make sure that, um, we can catch some potential. Uh, areas for growth or, or showing up if we're seeing some areas that were, um, that were not shored up enough, uh, in terms of, uh. PPE and logistics and protocols and all that kind of stuff, so. The date that we're proposing is, um, if we wanted to do something right after school ended, our last day of school. For kids is I think June, help me teen, third, second, something like that. I think it's a Friday before this, Monday. We would use Monday, June fourth as a prep day, have twenty days of instruction with a four day work week, uh, eight to twelve. Uh, we'd focus heavily on math and English. And then, uh, the second session, if we wanted to give more time for the vaccinations to kick in. Uh, more time, um, to see, have the rates continue to fall in our area, we would start, uh, July. And give the whole month of June for, to get, to get further down the line in terms of pand- the pandemic. Um, and that would be nineteen days of instruction with a five day work week, eight to twelve. So our committees will come together and help, help us make these decisions, board, I told our union partners. And, 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 and I'll say this out loud in front of our, in front of our entire district that. I will feel successful about our plans for our, uh, summer learning session. If it has the fingerprints of our entire staff and community on the plan, I, I want to hear, uh, all the voices. Uh, to help us make the plan for the summer as well as it can be. And then using that as a so, you know, what we're calling a soft reopening, um, going into August and so hopefully. We, we anticipate being able to open fully, uh, for, for twenty one, twenty two, uh, start of the year, uh, in August. And so, board, before I move on from this, I'd like, I just, I would, I, I'm gonna ask you the same question, just to get your feedback, board. Uh, given that we'll have limited capacity to offer a summer session for students. Which student grade spans or programs or subject areas, uh, should we prioritize for attending the summer session? What would be your top three student group priorities? And so, board, if you want some time to think about that and get to me later, that's fine, um, but that's kind of, I, I really wanna hear from the board on. What you think is a priority in terms of student groups, there's a variety of ways we can go, of course, we can go. Our early, our early kiddos, um, K to three, we can look at special ed, we can look at, uh, EL. We can look at, uh, poor attenders, we can look at kids who are, um, who are far be- well below, um, grade level. Um, we can look at middle of the road kids. Um, so we can go, yeah, a number of different directions and so. We, I'm asking each group that we convene with to say a question to get a sense, we got some really good feedback. Uh, from our union leaders yesterday, uh, they, they chimed in with their thoughts. And, um, and it, there was no, there was no real big consensus and so this is going to be some work, uh, for us to determine. Uh, what, what, um, groups we focus on. Also, board.
You want our answers now?
Yeah, sure, that'd be good if you have it, love to take them now.
Okay, well, I've been saying from the beginning, I would like to see the children who, whose parents, uh, feel comfortable with them going back, number one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and number two, uh, you know, parents that have to work or, uh, especially the chill, if we can identify them, the children that are struggling. That are getting really behind and losing a lot, uh, from what I understand, lots of children all over the place are losing. At least a year or two of learning because of this setback with, with having to do Zoom. So if we can identify the children that are really falling behind and struggling, which I'm sure we can. And the parents that are willing to bring them back or they have to work for whatever reason, those are the ones that I would pretty much focus on. Um, in my opinion.
Thank you, trustee Akas.
Anyone else, board, are you ready to answer that question?
Um, I like the idea of the prime. Primary Mary kids, cuz they don't know how to be in school.
Okay.
And then this will give them a.
Did she freeze?
Probably.
Yes, she did.
Okay, trustee La French, until trustee Benz can come back?
Um, I would, um, say our youngest. Um, and special ed disabilities and our working parents.
Do you guys hear, hear me?
Yeah, we hear.
Uh, trustee Benz, we heard, um, some of what you said and then you froze, so if you wanna repeat that end of your statement. Did she freeze again?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Think we lost her.
I would say.
Okay. Is that her?
No, it's, it's Amy.
Okay, Amy.
So I would say, uh, kindergarten to the, to third grade. As, um, one, a top. Group, low performers and then special ed.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say, I would like, uh, basically the same, can.
And I would say, I would like the basically the same, kinder through, I would say kinder through third, special ed. And our lowest performers and also um some of our middle schools, seventh and eighth if we can. Because they will be moving on to high school and we want to get them back into the classroom. You know, for those parents that want their children, you know, this all has to be voluntary, but um you know, that's who I would like to see.
Great, thank you, board. I have your feedback. And I just want to wrap up my comments uh with one uh one last thing. I want to share um. What was it? I want to share our website for the for the viewing public. Uh we, I'm so so happy and proud of uh this staff, Mister Kraus, Mister Quintero, who have been. Working diligently to establish partnerships um to get our staff vaccinated. And you know, the vaccinations are working. Kind of interesting right now. Um. What we're doing, what the county superintendent has asked superintendents to do. Is to establish partnerships with with clinics and healthcare providers to um basically fit for ourselves. As it relates to um vaccination. And so we've been doing just that. I've been really working closely with the. Uh high desert area superintendents and and uh we we've established some partnerships with some key clinics that have been providing some. Some uh vaccinations for our staff. I've asked uh Miss Quintero to update on what you're seeing. Can you all see the website? Give me thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, great. What I what I've asked Miss Quintero to do is to populate our website. This is under our district website on the COVID nineteen. Uh we've got some great resources, some videos around the the uh vaccinations. Um the differences between the types. And then here, we have uh we've been constantly populating where staff can go and get. Uh vaccinated. And and in some cases, we're finding out the day before, hey, we got, we got forty vaccinations left. Do you have staff? We've been sending them names, like tomorrow, we um we were told that we have a hundred spaces we can send. So we've been sending names. And so we started off with a survey of our full entire staff to say, hey, do you want, do you want to get vaccinated? And if and have you started vaccination and so on and so forth. We got five hundred responses, board. Fifty-five percent of our staff responded, I guess, they would like a vaccination. Twenty-three percent were unsure and twenty-two percent said no. So so far, we've been able to vaccinate one hundred. Of our staff members through these various partnerships. That's not including staff that's getting vaccinated through their own means. But but staff, uh this is a public service announcement, when I say staff, I mean staff classified and certificated. And that will continue to populate this, please check this website frequently. Uh because we continue to add new information on there all all the time on where you can get uh where you can get uh vaccinated. Right now, Saint Mary's has been our biggest supporter. They've done a hundred vaccinations for us already. Tomorrow, we have some opportunities here at Our Lady of the Desert Catholic Church. And so I I'd encourage you to, if you want to get vaccinated, uh we're doing our best to continue to populate this website. And to provide opportunities for you to get uh vaccinated. Uh and so with that, uh board, those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Any questions, board? Okay, um we're gonna move on to section ten, governing board members' reports and announcements. Um I know that we're running a little late, it's eight oh four, but um I think it's important that, you know, we hear from the board. Okay, we'll start with trustee Hines.
Thank you. Um I don't have a lot, just um. Getting centered again, I'm very thankful and grateful that um. The leadership is in place where even if I was not available, I felt confident in um. You know, our superintendent, our staff, our teachers, that our children, my children, were um. Still being taken care of. Uh sometimes when there's one part of a wheel that turns that's missing, it could. It could uh create, you know, just different types of situations and. I just felt very um confident in the leadership that is in place in our district right now. Um as I mentioned, I'm glad to be back. I'm thankful, I'm grateful. I went through a very um scary time for my family, for myself. And um being able to know that, you know, things were still gonna progress. And and continue to progress in a positive direction has been awesome. Uh I. This was shortly after we had begun our journey. With um our new superintendent at the helm and. You know, even as as I was at home and and recuperating and recovering. Um I'm, I just kind of meditated on the fact that this board had a positive. Influential and impactful time, making a decision to um. You know, come together as a unified front and united in. Bringing Dr. Mitchell aboard. And uh so I'm just thankful I see and hear. The progress even even during this time, you know, I was getting a lot of well wishes and text messages and encouragement. So I'm just grateful for all the prayers and um I'm thankful to be back and. Uh you know, I'm just ready to continue to move forward, to do what I can. To uh continue to have transparency and unity and to try to grow that. And um I look forward to that. So I I I'm still hopeful. Thank you.
Trustee Ekis.
Well, Amy, I'm sure glad to see you. Yeah, I just really missed you. You're part of our team and I'm just so happy to see you. And I'm gonna keep praying for you.
Thank you.
Um uh I don't know if you guys can hear me. I keep losing you guys. For some reason, the computer keeps cutting out and dropping me. And I hope I don't get dropped again.
Can you hear you, trustee Ekis? I can hear you.
Okay, uh just real quickly, um I have my own uh opinions on COVID and the vaccines. Um but I keep them to myself. I figure, you know, we're, we should all do our own uh work to educate ourselves on this situation. Um but I uh just, if anybody's interested, uh Joe Biden did an interview, a town hall. On uh COVID. And there was a mother with a child who asked questions about going back to school. And wanted his, you know, advice or leadership. And um I encourage anybody who wants to hear what he had to say to go to Google or YouTube and check it out. Um I'm, it's not up to me to repeat what I heard, but it was interesting. Um other than that, though, again, I'll keep my opinions to myself. I just want people to really do their research and look into things. And make an educated decision on whatever it is they want to do. Um other than that, um I want to appreciate everybody who prays for me and um who supports me. Uh being on this board. I really appreciate those prayers and those encouraging words. It really, really helps and uh keeps me motivated and focused on why we're here and what we do, what we do. So. I want those people to just know that I'm so appreciative and so blessed by them, and I want to thank them for that. Um other than that, though, I hope everybody had a great Valentine's Day. It was beautiful. The weather is amazing. And my prayers do go out to those people in Texas and all those other states where the weather is just unbelievable. We're just so blessed here in California. So um other than that, I'm, everything's good. And I really appreciate everybody and what they're doing and the teachers and the staff, everybody. For what they're doing to help our students learn. Um other than that, just thank you. It's been a good meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Benz.
Um I want to say how grateful I am for the staff, for everyone we're working. To continue to let the dis- district function. Um with the uh PLCPs, I get really excite cited the way the schools. Are becoming a co- collective unit and we're working to to get. Gather to move in a pos- positive dire- direction. It get gets me excited excited to to see that. And I look for forward. As it goes into play and comes to through. Fruit fruition so that we we can be a di- district that we're proud of. And I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work. I know, know it's hard. Um and just again, just be 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 safe and be be kind. And that's it. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee LaFrance.
I don't have much to say, but I do want to say, Miss Miss Amy, welcome back. You know, it's nice to um see you. Um I'm glad that you know that you're, you know, feeling somewhat better, you know, um. I want to um thank everyone, you know, for the work that they're doing currently with the district, you know, I want to thank my other. You know, um board members, you know, for, you know, carrying this torch and us being here and working together as a team. Um I want to give a a kudos to, you know, Dr. Mitchell, you know. Um I know that, you know, that you are doing what's best for our district, you know, I am, you know. Um I'm grateful, you know, for the knowledge that you brought into our district and the plans that you have um. Been putting forth in order to have, you know, our district, you know, feel, you know, stronger, especially during this time of COVID. And I'm off my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dr. I mean, trustee LaFrance. You know, between the computer and my phone, I don't know. But I I just want to um say kudos to uh all of our teachers. You've worked really hard and our staff, everyone in the district. I mean, we pulled off. You've you've been pulling off something that no one ever thought that we would be in. And you're doing it in a high fashion. And I appreciate that. Dr. Mitchell, wow. Um in the short time that you've been here, you have turned this district around. And I have to give you that. I have to tell you that. I, the teachers are happy, uh the professional development that you have given. To our teachers and our staff is just unprecedented. Um. And that's, I I see the vision for our district. I see it now. I see where we can go if we work together. And and it was a long road to get here. And I see it moving, even doing distant learning, even. Though you have not seen one child in a classroom, you know, the vision that you have for the district is just phenomenal. And. And. I've visioned this for a lot of years now, and I see it happening. I just wish that we can all come together and all of us. You know, come together. And I see we're coming together. I see that. You know, it took some hard work to get here, you know, um. But I see it happening. I see, I see a horizon. Okay, I I, you know, transparency, someone mentioned transparency. You know, we've always been transparent. You know, a lot of you may not feel that way, but. We've been transparent and stuck to our guns. And we did what we did because we knew that this district could be a better district. If we had the right people in charge, caring about our teachers, caring about our students and caring about our staff. And I see that now. And I'm so happy. Are we perfect? No, we're not. We still have a road to go. But just in the past few months, I have to give it to Dr. Mitchell. You know, the welcome that you've received from teachers and parents and staff is just phenomenal. And I hear it in our in our school reports, you know, and so I just wanted to say that. I, for the first time, I did a virtual walkthrough. And I was really impressed with what I saw. I went to George, not George, I went to Gus Franklin. And I visited. All the classrooms, every single class, one classroom in each grade level. And I was really impressed with the. With the attention span and that the kids got in the, what the teachers did. I was really, I was really impressed with a lot of the classes I went to. But Miss Sienna, her class, she had thirty participants. And she constantly, constantly went to the class for clarity and clarification on. Do you understand what you're doing? Raise your hand. And what do you think? It was total class engagement in all of the classes. Miss Sheridan's class, Miss Hernandez's class. So I was really, really impressed with what I, what I saw. And just the technology to allow us to do that, you know, is just phenomenal. That we could sit in our homes and visit classrooms and sit in our homes and come to board meetings. Sitting in our homes and the teachers could teach class is just, I'm I'm so happy for this technology that we have. And it's only gonna get better. Yes, our computers are crashing, which mine did today, you know. But we pulled out a phone and keep it going. Who would know, ten years ago, we would be talking on our phones in a meeting. But with that being said, you know, um I'm happy in the direction that our district is going. And. I just want us to remember that we're all human beings and we all bleed red. And we all have emotions and we all have feelings. And we have to acknowledge that, you know. And trustee Hines, I'm happy that you're back. You know, when I heard that you were sick, as you know, I called you on the phone. And I asked you if there's anything that I could do for you. You let me know. And so it's not that we're separated, you know, because we're all are human beings. And we all need the support and help of each other. And that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna hold each other accountable. That, we're gonna do that. But at the end of the day. We have to, we are, we have to take care of each other and look out for each other, all of us. So I'm gonna get off our soapbox because we gotta go into a long closed session tonight. And it's already eight seventeen. So with that being said, I'm gonna move on to section eleven, closed session declarations. The board will be taking. Items eleven point oh two, government code section five four nine five seven, public employee performance evaluation. Actually, that should say informal performance evaluation titled superintendent. Eleven point oh three, government code section five four nine five seven point six, update conference with labor negotiators. Um with ADTA and the CSEA, chapter forty-five. And eleven point oh four, government code section, public employee discipline dismissal release appointment and reassignment. And uh we'll go into public testimony before a closed session. I won't read that because I read uh an open session. So I would um ask that, is there any audience members who would like to address the board for. Closed session agenda items only. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any?
No, ma'am.
Okay, uh ADTA, would you like to address the board on closed session agenda items only? Do we have ADTA president? Hearing none, I'll call for CSEA representative. Would you like to address the board on any closed session agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to items uh sections thirteen, recess to closed session. Um. Can I get a motion?
A motion?
Have a motion by trustee Ekis. Is there a second?
A second, trustee Hines.
And uh a second by trustee Hines. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekis.
Aye.
Trustee Hines.
Hines, aye.
Trustee LaFrance.
LaFrance, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion pass five zero. The time is eight nineteen PM. We're in closed session. Thank you. The, I'm on your screen. Is he there?
Yes, I'm I'm here.
Okay, we need to reconvene. Could you pull the screen up?
Yes, uh Chris has control of it. There he is.
Okay, I got my.
We got it.
Okay, um. Okay, moving to section fourteen, reconvene, open session. I need a motion to, actually, can we take roll call?
Yes, trustee Benz. Trustee Benz, uh how about trustee Ekis?
Here.
Trustee Hines.
Present.
Trustee LaFrance.
LaFrance, present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present.
And Benz is here. I'm here. Okay. Sorry, I was mute muted.
Okay, five zero. Okay, um. We need to, we have a form that's been established. The time is ten.
Thirty-one.
Ten thirty-one PM. I know uh we have a governor's policy. I know we have a governance policy that we end our board meetings at 10:30. However, we still have some additional closed session items that we must complete today, tonight. I need a motion to extend the board meeting until, Dr. Mitchell, what you predict, 11:15?
We, yeah, yeah, we won't need more than 45 minutes, ma'am president.
Okay. So I need a motion to extend the meeting for 45 minutes to 11:15.
I, I'm moved to extend the meet, meeting for 45 minutes.
You have a first by trustee, 45 minutes or less. I have a motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by trustee LaFrance. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion. Our board policy is 9:30. At 9:30, we are supposed to stop our meeting and vote at that time. We did not do that. You did not do that. I was not part of the meeting. I could only hear it. I couldn't voice my opinion. I did send text messages to several people reminding them of this policy. Nobody responded back to me. Nobody replied. And the meeting continued to go on past the time allowed to our policy. I don't know if that's considered illegal or what the issue is, but it was supposed to be 9:30. We were supposed to reconvene and vote at that time, not an hour later. So I really hope people pay attention to policy. And it would be nice if people would pay attention to a board member who cannot get into her own meeting. But having said that, go on and do what you need to do.
Okay. And, you know, I apologize. You know what? I'm sorry. I had totally, we got engaged in that. And, you know, for a long time, our meetings ended at 10:30. And you're absolutely right. We do have a policy for 9:30. I'm sorry. We have business that we had to discuss. I didn't get a text message from you.
No, because nobody texts this message to me. Nobody hit me. I'm out. It's, see, look, my internet telling me it's going to shut down on me again. There's something really wrong here when a board member cannot be part of her board meeting. And for some reason, I'm the one who keeps getting kicked out. And I have a lot to say, but apparently I'm not going to be one of the five. And I'm not being heard. And this is just horrible. There's got to be something illegal about it. There's something really wrong. And if everybody wants to dismiss me, that's fine. But it's sad that a board member cannot attend her own board meeting. I'm one of five. I'm allowed to be at my board meetings, and I'm not. There's something wrong with the system. I don't care what anybody says. I find it very odd that I'm the only one that's being kicked to the curb unmuted. And the stupid thing keeps telling me to unmute myself. And I keep doing it and it won't unmute. And you all think I'm crazy. I'm sitting here pulling my hair out because I can't be part of my own board meeting. And I'm at home and I have people sleeping. They're hearing me talk loud. Keep asking you guys if you can hear me. I'm waking up my entire home trying to be part of this meeting. And I can't. And that's wrong. And if it happened to any one of you, you would be just as upset, just as frustrated. And I feel like nobody cares. I'm out in left field and you guys are just continuing on with the meeting. Nobody cares. The only person that text me back was the board secretary and one of the other board members. Nobody else reached out to me. Nobody else cared. And that's wrong. That's not how a board operates. That's not how we work as a quorum. But, and I heard Ms. Benz even say earlier that, you know, what if there was no quorum? When she decided to not vote for Ms. Heinz. Okay, I'm part of this quorum, but apparently not. Nobody cares if my voice is heard. I didn't hear any consideration. Everybody just continued on without me. But that's fine. It is what it is. You know, just go ahead and do what you need to do.
Are there any other discussion? Let's call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Aye.
Trustee Eckes.
No.
Trustee Heinz.
Nay.
Trustee LaFrance.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
Aye, motion passed 3-2. The time is 10:36. 10:35, 36?
Yeah.
Okay, we're in closed session. So everyone logged back into closed session, the ones that want to stay. But we still have business that we need to attend to.
Oh, I can't. There we go. Thank you. You know, the one good, good thing about being home is that I don't have to drive home now. I'm already home. I'm going to go wash my face, brush my teeth and fall into bed.
Yes, and we don't have to make that drive down that hill.
Yeah, and you don't have to make the drive anymore. No more.
That was the drive after these meetings.
You are done.
Is everyone with us now? Is Holly with us?
Yes, we're together.
Okay, everyone is on? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to six, where am I? Reconvene, open session again. Call for the roll call.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, present.
Trustee Eckes. Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, present.
Trustee LaFrance.
LaFrance, present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present. We have a quorum 5-0. The time is?
11:02.
11:02 PM. Announcement of reportable actions taken during closed session. The board did take action in closed session. Under Public Employee Dismissal Release pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957. In closed session, the board took action to non-reelect employee number 6258, 6256, and 6253, probationary, certificated employees pursuant to Education Code 44929.21, effective at the end of the 2021 school year. The board directed the superintendent or her designees, his designees, to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows. There was a motion by trustee Benz and a second by trustee LaFrance. The ayes, trustee LaFrance, trustee Benz, trustee Turner. And no's were trustee Eckes. No one abstained. That was the only action that the board took during closed session.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you repeat that? I'm missing trustee Heinz.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The ayes were trustee LaFrance, trustee Benz, trustee Heinz, and trustee LaFrance. I mean, trustee Turner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to section 16, adjournment. Can I have a motion?
I motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by trustee Benz. Is there a second?
A second, LaFrance.
A second by trustee LaFrance. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinz.
Heinz, aye.
Trustee LaFrance.
LaFrance, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed 5-0. The time is 11:03. Meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
You're welcome, sweetie. Okay, good night.
That was very nice of you. Thank you.